Good evening, everybody. Welcome, and we always know from the size of the audience that they're not, we're gonna have an interesting media, meeting tonight. Looks like we're gonna have an interesting meeting tonight. Thanks for coming. Would you all please stand and? Rachel, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Wheatley?
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker? And Counselor Turgason?
Here.
Counselor Carmen is absent.
City Manager Will Worthy, would you please start us off with your rousing rendition of what's happened in our city last month?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Rosacker. So, rousing, does that mean I have to sing the whole thing this time? Or maybe do it in a Sean Connery, well, maybe not. Okay, sure. The Newburgh City Managers' report monthly statistics through the end of April. And statistics, although they may seem dry, and sometimes can be hard to enthuse about, they do provide a path forward to knowing things. And here we go. Planning, combined planning decisions of all sorts too, although looking at what is on the forward docket for Scott and his team, we know that that is going to explode soon. Building permits, similarly, relatively no low number, but there is a lot of stuff coming. And honorable counselors, you may recall, I forwarded you that PowerPoint recently, just to get a sense of, I feel that there's a 2022 type year, just around the corner for construction coming soon. Building permits, other types, thirty-six, similar story. And inspections, but one thing that always does does hold true is the building inspections happen all the time, irrespective of whether there's a surge in construction or not, they just go down or up a little bit. But that's still a very respectable number for just one and a half blokes. One and a half blokes? Four hundred and forty-four inspections with one and a half blokes? Crikey! Community engagement, twenty-five people reached out to the city through the website and got a delicious answer to their question. Social media engagement, seventeen thousand nine ninety-six. Click-throughs or other responses that Emily could record, and that is a monster, huge number for one month. Steadily, their Facebook followers and LinkedIn followers and other, or other couple of platforms continue to slowly grow over time. And this isn't the terrifying month that's gonna come in the next report. Seven public information requests, seven opportunities for Rachel and her team to look for documents needed by the public, but the monster number is coming next time. And Rachel, what was that massive unbelievable number that we're about to hear about next time?
I believe it was fifteen in one month.
Fifteen public information requests in one month? But that's later. One point four two millions of payments to accounts payable and one point zero five millions of payroll. And that's been fairly typical lately as the sort of numbers that we're seeing. Although, I will of course point out that unlike the competitor cities, our budget is stable in the four-year horizon. HR recruitment's advertised, three hires, three separations, five, and all manner of other workers issues, four. IT resolved a very large number of tickets, four hundred and six service tickets for the city. And I think that's partly down to the fact that we're looking at shifting our virtual desktops from the Citrix platform to the Azure platform, and that is creating quite a bit of help tickets as he starts to noodle through that. He's also doing a complete overhaul of our local network, looking for switches that are past their lifespan, replacing them and updating them. That's also causing some extra help tickets right now. And six after-hours on-call events when they had to work into the night. Library activity, it wouldn't be a City Manager statistic report without mentioning the explosive, best-in-class, highest circulating library in Yamhill County. In fact, the highest circulating library in Marion or Polk Counties by capita. Wow! Thirty-two thousand circulation events with a door count of six thousand one hundred and three visitors. Now, here's the bad news. Due to a failure of the RMS stats gathering software platform, I don't have the April statistics for public safety. But I have been assured that normal statistics will begin to be gathered again soon. And they're working on it as hard as they can to get it going. We do however have the dispatch statistics, seven hundred and twenty-nine nine-one-one calls and two thousand six hundred and eighty-three non-emergency calls. A little bit of a lighter month, but still nonetheless very busy indeed. And water production, forty-nine point eight million gallons of fresh, wholesome, delicious water. And we dealt with one hundred point five million gallons of the other stuff. And eight hundred and seventy-nine work orders completed. That's a bit of a light month compared to recent months. But I know that many of the crew were focused on doing ADA work on Center Street. And also, we had five vacancies. And if you have five vacancies at once, that's gonna reduce what you can do. But we're hiring people as fast as we can. So, that is the totals through the end of April twenty twenty-five. Your taxpayer dollars, hard at work, leaner and more efficient than other nearby cities that I will not name. Read the register.
Good job, Will. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we, uh, this is our time for public comments. Now, if you're here to talk about a particular subject and you've signed up for public comments, you have a choice. You can either speak now, or you can wait until the item comes up on the agenda later tonight, and then you can speak after it's been presented. So it's your choice. At this point, I've got Elaine Coschella. Welcome. Come on up, have a seat. Press the button on the mic so the red dot comes off and then, or light comes on and then.
Hi. Is there a timer somewhere? Oh, thank you. Thank you. I am not here for a particular subject that was on your agenda. I am here as a community member. Full disclosure, I live right on the boundary and I'm actually in Yamhill County. But what happens in in Newburgh City affects me a lot. Like said, my name is Elaine Coschella. I worked for the Newburgh Schools for thirteen years and was one of many who left the school district. To, I'm now in Forest Grove, like so many others, five from our staff alone. Um, I want to, I want to tell you just a little bit about my last week. I'm gonna go back to Wednesday of last week. Last week was the last week of school. It was here in Newburgh. It was in Forest Grove as well. Um, and we were doing a lot of la, end-of-the-year things. So we were, Tuesday, I went on a field trip with kids to downtown. Wednesday, I got a text from a friend and it said, "ICE is swarming Cottage Grove." They picked up a family, sent the uncle to the school to get his eight-year-old niece. The last day of school is tomorrow. I spent the rest of that day distracted and kind of worried. On Thursday, got an update from my friend. That was deeply disturbing. I'll, I'll talk about it later, about the other city. And then later in the day, there was news that ICE was in Newburgh and that two vineyard workers had been picked up. Friday, June thirteenth, it was my last day of school, and early in the morning I posted this. Friends, on this Friday morning, my heart is heavy. ICE has come to Newburgh and is causing fear and for some lasting trauma and harm. Yesterday, two vineyard workers were picked up by ICE in Newburgh. Neither had any criminal record. Rumors swirled about ICE being at our schools. If they were, they did not gain access to any students. Unfortunately, that was not the case in Cottage Grove, another small rural Oregon town this week. A family was picked up in Cottage Grove. The father was snatched from the street as he was walking to work. The uncle was threatened with arrest and coerced to pick up his eight-year-old niece. He was on her emergency contact list at the local elementary school. The uncle went to the school and sat and cried. The school did everything right. They delayed releasing the child until they came up with a plan. Eventually, the eight-year-old was released to a mentor who drove her straight to a safe location. The student, when polled from her class by the principal, asked if she had a dentist appointment. This story does not have a happy ending. The father chose to self-deport with his daughter to Guatemala, a country his daughter doesn't remember, from which they fled for a better, safer life. No, he did not have a criminal record. This information is from a staff member. She reports the entire staff is a wreck, barely able to hold it together. Yesterday, when I was writing this, it was yesterday, they had to run the end-of-the-year field day for everyone else and try to hold it together. This is not okay. This is not Christian. The heart of God is breaking over this. A couple of points. First off, the show and the terror is the point. There is no need for masked men to pick people up from the street, from their places of work, from churches, from schools. There are not more people being deported currently. It's just being done with more harm. Secondly, this is not about getting rid of dangerous criminals. It never was. Trump has revoked the protected status of whole groups of individuals here on asylum legally. This is about racism and classism. Um, there's a lot more I could say about this. I know that you are a city council, right? And within Yamhill County. And what I want to say to all of you is this. I hope that all of you can pull together to speak for everyone in Yamhill County. I hope that we can be a community that protects and helps and maybe even be a community that says, hey, we need people, we need workers, and let's get a legal way for people to become citizens who are not criminals. There's an idea. That's, that's what I want to say to you. I, I am very encouraged that, this is the last thing I'll say, that this community has stepped up. So I'm asking you all to step up too.
That's correct. Good evening. My name is Rob Felton. I work at George Fox University as Chief of Staff in the President's Office. Because I'm also a dad taxi, I will not be available, or might likely will not be available like later when the CET grant is being discussed. So I'm here to offer the university's support for the Spark Newburgh Project, which we believe will assist multiple Newburgh residents in achieving homeownership. As you'll hear later during the Spark Newburgh presentation, this project will offer benefits of affordable housing for participants during the program, down payment assistance, as well as an educational program that will help prepare participants for homeownership. And I don't think I have to convince anyone here that affordable housing is a challenge for Newburgh citizens, and I hope you will fund Spark Newburgh's efforts to help multiple citizens achieve their dream of owning a home. Thank you for considering this request and also for your volunteer service as city counselors.
Hi, everybody. My name's Nathan Wildfire, and I run a statewide nonprofit called the Missing Middle Housing Fund. In twenty nineteen, your six largest employers, you're one of them, gathered together with SEDCOR, Strategic Economic Development Corporation, to try to figure out what to do about workforce housing, the housing that serves your middle-income folks. And statistically, that means the people that make between eighty percent of AMI and a hundred and twenty percent of Aryan income. Uh, and like most employers, they knew that the biggest reason they had trouble hiring and retaining employees was housing. It wasn't finding enough for the right workers, it wasn't finding the right manufacturing partners or spaces anymore. It was the high cost and unavailability of your housing. And so they were having a really hard time hiring George Fox, ADEC, Friendsview, Providence School District, plus you. So for a good four years, which coincided with the beginning of the pandemic, those groups led by SEDCOR, your economic development nonprofit across Polk, Marion, and Yamhill Counties, met. And meanwhile, put in a grant through the help of Representative Anna Scharf to try to boost some sort of housing initiative in your community. Years later, the state legislature came through and brought dollars to the table, three million bucks in fact. And those employers, along with SEDCOR, decided to hire us, the Missing Middle Housing Fund, this statewide nonprofit who works with different communities around the state to try to figure out their housing challenges. That's when I met a bunch of you, a bunch of familiar faces around this table to me, hello again. Uh, most importantly, I met your mayor, no, no offense to the rest of you. But the mayor has been a pretty instrumental partner of ours in both gathering different folks around the table and then driving forward change. So for instance, the reason I was here mostly today was I was walking two sites that we just made offers on that were accepted in Newburgh to build missing middle housing in your community. I think we go to PreApp with you guys this week. So I'm here today to also speak in favor of the Spark Project because when you start caring and thinking about housing, whether it's middle-income housing, which is what my organization does, or housing for those with the least means at the lowest end of the income spectrum, it all is important. There's different pathways folks take to getting to the place they want to be, whether that is a good rental or homeownership. And a lot of that starts with financial literacy and with actually having the ability to access affordable housing. So I don't pretend to know a whole lot about your city, actually. I learned that from each of you. But what I do know is that the housing continuum matters. And folks are never going to be able to access middle-income housing unless they have a way to access housing at all when they are at our lowest income levels in no matter what community I serve. So I'm here to speak in favor of housing projects because it all adds up. And you have accelerating housing costs and very low vacancy rates. I think that's probably it, but I would welcome you folks connecting with me at any time if you want to better understand what we have been doing with the big employers and partners in your community. Because your staff and your elected officials have been hugely helpful to us and our mission, and I'm very grateful for that. Not every city is, by the way. We like to say we work with the coalition of the enthusiastic, and that is definitely Newburgh. Okay, thanks. I have to go to Boardman, Oregon now, which is really far away from here. Thanks.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for making time for us to come and present tonight. My name is Maya, and I am one of the ten delegates that got the opportunity to travel to our sister city and school in Japan. We are so excited to share with you tonight. Oh, there we go. Um, visiting the schools in Japan was one of my favorite activities. It was amazing to see how schools in a different country worked and how they were the same and different from ours. But interacting with the other students was really what made the trip so special. We might not have been able to verbally communicate with each other with the language barrier, but we found other ways to interact and have fun. Um, one way was teaching each other games from our different cultures and playing sports together. In this photo, um, we were in a PE class in Yanasei Middle School. Um, all the Japanese students were so kind and so excited to meet us. It was really great visiting each of the schools. We really felt like celebrities and felt super welcomed and at home halfway across the world. Um, in this classroom, they taught us to make origami and to play kendama, which is a traditional Japanese game. One of my highlights from visiting the schools was joining recess at the elementary school. When the kids found out that I played soccer, they got super excited and they kept inviting me back outside to play with them. It was so fun how I managed to connect with these kids and play with them and really felt like we are friends all within one hour. I can hardly put into words how amazing this experience was. I, yeah. Um, this trip is so important because it allows the younger generation to connect with people across the world and make long-lasting friendships. Um, I believe that we will, us, the delegates, and any future delegates will take that connection with us as we grow, and we will create a more connected world. I think that it's very important that we can share our culture and understand the differences, but also know that we are all just people living on the same planet, and it is important for us to connect.
Hello, my name is Cordelae. I am also one of the delegates. How does this work, Mark? Okay, so my aspect is nature. Well, this is a picture of Osaka City, which is the city we stayed in from the mountains around it. In Japan, they take great pride in their country and the way their country is shown to others. Their nature is especially well cared for. Their mountains are untouched by any buildings. Hence, you can see it in this picture, they are built on the valleys. The, they keep amazing care, and as you step outside, every day, you look up and around and you are shocked by just how beautiful it is. In comparison, it is gorgeous. About seventy percent of the land in Japan is covered in forest, and trust me, they have all different kinds of forests. They have bamboo forests, they have trees I can't even recognize or name. They in, have managed to increase their tree cover over the last two hundred years instead of losing it and have been very careful about preserving their landscape. They, I, every time you step outside, as I keep reiterating it, you see the, the beauty of it. They take pride in just how well cared for it is. Every grain of rice that they grow is considered like valuable because it is their land and their country. This is the Ekeno Silver Mine, and it was a historical site for them, which is one of the reasons why cities were built in this area. The, even around the mining area that is now a museum. They have plants and trees that are clearly kept and cared for inside the mine and outside of it. As I stepped out of the mine after traveling through it, there was a row of Japanese maples, and I recognized them because they are in my own yard. And I told my host student, Kanon, that it was in my mother's garden. And she smiled and was shocked that I knew what they were. And I was glad that we had a chance to connect even over their nature. They take great pride again in their country and their land, and they even managed to incorporate it into their architecture.
Hi, I am Elise Kinney. I am another one of the delegates. So my main focus for this slideshow and for most of the trip was researching a lot about the architecture in Japan. So I have, I made so many new discoveries about architecture while, um, while visiting Japan. I have an interest in, in old architecture and any types of, of vintage antique buildings and antiques in general. So it was incredible to see, um, see a place with so much history. So this first slide is Osaka Castle. It is located in Osaka City in Japan. And as you can see, it had, so it was constructed from fifteen eighty-five to fifteen eighty-six. Um, it's, so it does currently house over ten thousand artifacts, which is incredible. That was incredible to see. In this corner, you can see, um, some golden, a golden dragon and a tiger. Uh, I thought that was one of the coolest pieces of artifacts I saw inside. They had some outside too, such as a cannon located right outside the castle. So this is another really incredible castle. It was great to see a standing castle and a castle ruins. So these are the Takata Castle ruins. It's known as the castle in the sky because in October, a sea of clouds appears around it. And it's on top of the mount, on top of a mountain, so it's very, very beautiful to be able to see such incredible views from the top. I also was noticing a little bit of nature. I saw this incredible tree. I, I never seen this type of tree before. But there were a lot of different sorts, uh, there were a lot of differences in the architecture over there compared to here. There's a lot, since they have a lot longer of a history in Japan, you can see so many more time periods of architecture than you can over here. We have a long history, but they have an even longer history. So this is the Yamamagisan Silver Mine Town. We got a chance to look around in all of the housing from the mine workers, which was incredible. They had a saying there that if they treated their workers with respect, they would work even harder and produce more silver out of the mines. So they gave them very luxurious housing, which was incredible to see because a lot of the time over here, it's a lot harder to find places, housing for individuals that might not have a bigger income or some, like such as that. But, um, so these But um, so these mines were in operation from fifteen twenty-seven to nineteen twenty-three. You can still take um, tours all around them, which is really fun. We did not get a chance to this year. The past year's delegates did. A couple of our delegates did on their own time with their host families. Uh, so these are some of the houses that had really distinct, um, so they were red tiled buildings, and they had very distinct roofs. I learned a lot about why the roofs are as they are. They, you can see a lot of grooves, and they help the rainwater, and they last so much longer. So that's why so many of these bailes, buildings are still standing to this day in such great condition. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Will Fletcher, and uh, I am talking about some of the food in Japan. There are a lot of different kinds of food that we don't have or do have here in America, depending on the kind. Um, so this is sushi. You've probably seen it before. It's kind of, it's like raw fish and other things like wrapped up with rice. It comes in a lot of different forms, like rolls and uh, onigiri. So um, I really enjoyed going to the kevere boat sushi places and trying all the different kinds. Which one? Oh, um, uh, another food that they have there is ramen. Now, in America, we have the, the Costco, like ramen packets. But in um, in Japan, they have really fancy restaurants with the noodles and the the, it's, it's incredible. I had a Japanese ramen restaurant today, actually. It was, it's in, it's incredible there. I don't know how to describe the differences really, but it's just bad. It's just awesome. So it's great. I don't, I don't have any. Um, this is one thing I had never heard of before I got there. Um, it was called okonomiyaki. The name means grilled as you like it. Basically, you take a bunch of stuff like lettuce and bacon and a bunch of other stuff that I don't know about, and you fry it into a pancake. And then you put like all the sauces you can imagine on top of it, and it's incredible. I, I, I love it. It's, it's one of my favorite foods now. That's one thing I wish we had here in America, for sure. Now, these are only some of the foods because, oh, yeah, because I haven't, I didn't try all of them, and I think I have a limited number of slides, so, yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Elsie Dolo. Um, I'm here to talk about the culture. Japan has a really rich culture, partly because it's been allowed much longer than America has. But one of the funnest parts of it was that they had so many mascots everywhere. Um, so the one on the left is actually the Takeda Castle mascot, and his name is Takagi. It has Takeda Castle on its head. Then you have the, there's two Asago City mascots. You have the one in the middle, which is Chasurin, and the top right, which is the Asago City symbol. And then there's Himeji Castle there, and he has this little Himeji Castle hat. And they were all over the place. You'd see the little characters to symbolize each city, and they're a really fun culture. And then there's the more traditional ones where we got to participate in the Japanese tea ceremony. Um, we gotta pick our bowls, which were meant to symbolize something about you or something you enjoy. A lot of us chose chicken bowls because we liked the fun patterns. Um, they let us stir our matcha with our little whisks, and we gotta grind the matcha with a stone grinder, and it really gave us the culture aspect of it. They're meant to symbolize harmony and peace with people because you're really focusing on the moment because each tea ceremony is very unique. Um, then we also got to try on kimonos, or most of us did. I'm sure you all have heard of kimonos. Um, there's, they also have summer kimonos. My host family had never tried on a kimono, so it was fun to experience it with them. And they're, they're really warm, but we've got to walk around the town and try ice cream and experience the things. Okay, I think that's it. Okay, and then I have a gift from the mayor of Asago City for our mayor. Um, and he wrote this for it. "As part of our ongoing sister city exchange with Wadaya Ma Junior High in Asago City, Japan, the city of Newburgh was honored to receive a meaningful gift, a beautifully crafted set of wooden blocks sanded by local artists in Asago. In Japanese culture, these blocks are traditionally given to women in hospitals who have just given birth, symbolizing hope, renewal, and the start of a new chapter. Wadaya Ma's generous gift serves as a touching gesture of friendship and signifies the continued growth and deepening of our connection across cultures and generations."
Have everybody come up here. There's picture, huh?
We're gonna bow three.
Very neat, very neat.
You guys know I don't.
And then we have to like search that sheet to put it back together. And there's like ten of those around the table trying to figure out how these blocks get put back in.
It sounds like you all have a good time. Would, would any of you like to live in Japan? Great. I hope you get to visit again sometime. Thank you for the gift. Thank you. Please express my thanks to the mayor.
We need to go next.
You know, what a great program. I'm glad you, you've represented us once, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent calendar. Okay, tough acts to follow. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight I'll be presenting the proposed update to the street tree list and an associated code section for your consideration. See, first a little bit of context on the preferred street tree list. Uh, what is currently in place is an outdated list from nineteen ninety-two, which is quite limited in its options and supplemental information. It contains trees that are now under quarantine, such as the ash species um, and others that have proven to be less tolerant of urban conditions over time. Staff would like to provide more robust options in terms of quantity of species and also proven performers in urban and suburban areas. Uh, also important is providing guidance on placement and environmental conditions, which I will touch on in the next few slides. Staff would additionally like to amend the code section related to tree removal and replacement in chapter twelve of the Newburgh Municipal Code to read more clearly. The intention is to require a street tree replacement when a landscape area of a property would become deficient of the required tree spacing as specified in NMC Chapter fifteen point four two oh, which is the landscape chapter. Uh, next, I would like to show Council some photos of typical issues we see in the field. Uh, the photo on the left shows a maturing tree that was placed too close to the sewer inlet. Um, obviously, the roots of the tree would be trying to go around that concrete box under the ground. Uh, what's not as easy to see in the photo is that because of that limited underground space, the tree was starting to push out that section of curving. Uh, the other issue uh, in the scenario is that the tree species is too large for that planter width. The other photo in this slide shows another utility-type conflict with the tree placed too close to the meter box and generally not enough space for that type of tree there either. Uh, in this case, the sidewalk and curb were fairing pretty well, but the adjacent property owner was having issues with the utilities coming into that meter box. Uh, unfortunately, this is another issue that we are tracking more recently in the field, where some folks are cutting down trees along their entire street frontage without a permit or replacement. It seems that one resident may take trees down in the right of way, and a neighbor may see this occurring and follow suit, sometimes leaving entire sections of streets uh, or pockets within neighborhoods without street trees. Uh, and then staff has been working with Officer Winters when needed on this type of occurrence. Conversely, the photo, uh, this photo is of a successful tree removal permit and replacement that shut, that staff shepherded. Uh, the resident submitted the request for their tree removal permit, and staff was able to confirm the status of the tree in question. Then staff verified the neighborhood-specific tree plan and helped guide the residents towards successful varietal selection and later placement within the plantership. Now I'd like to go over the major differences between the older preferred street tree list and the proposed approved street tree list. As mentioned previously, the old list has very limited tree species to choose from. Um, some of those trees are currently under quarantine, uh, and several are not very tolerant of urban conditions over time. Likewise, some are not widely recommended as street trees as they may have feature that, features that are not as desirable or be prone to disease. Importantly, the list lacks information that would prove helpful for guiding appropriate selection and placement of a tree in a given planting area. With that, staff has sought to introduce more robust options, especially for small and medium-sized trees, trees that are hardy, resistant to disease, lower maintenance, and that are well adapted to urban and suburban conditions. Staff has also provided pertinent information and linked resources for guidance on species selection and placement in um, urban and suburban landscape areas. And these next few slides are example pages from the uh, proposed approved street tree list. This first example is of some general information and the tree list codes explained. And this next slide shows one of the list pages from the small-size tree section. We can see the Latin and common names for the trees, their recommended planting widths and lengths, which is kind of the game changer on the proposed list, uh, whether they can tolerate poor drainage or clay soils, if they possess any level of drought tolerance, if they are appropriate under power lines, and finally, if they are deciduous or evergreen trees. And note that the common names in green are also hyperlinks to informational resource pages uh, for most every tree on the list. Uh, so I wanted to show what one of these resource pages looks like. I largely drew, drew upon OSU's Department of Agriculture website, which is quite extensive. Um, and here we see all the pertinent information for the lovely paper-bark maple, which is a great small tree with a lot of seasonal interest. And here is another example resource page from Oregon's famed Portland-area tree hybridizer, J. Frank Schmidt and Son. Uh, this page is for the newer dwarf varietal of Osage Orange, which is fruitless and thornless and is quite heat and drought tolerant. Another uh, really lovely small-sized tree. And their site also has data sheets on each tree, um, which you can print out or download, which is really handy. And with that, staffers is requesting consideration for adopting the proposed City of Newburgh Approved Street Tree List into ordinance in the near future, and likewise, to consider the request to make sure your placement criteria clear in the Newburgh Municipal Code Section twelve point oh five point two six oh E, uh, consistent with established community development department practice and landscape code chapter fifteen point four two. It's for your consideration. Um, we can start taking steps to get this approved into ordinance, am I right, Scott? Um, but if you wanted to ask any questions and discuss it further, this is a good opportunity to do so. I understand his previous request, and it was around that very same code section. So I believe um, in his scenario, he had more trees than what that minimum spacing requirement is in the landscape chapter, and I'm not sure exactly the year when, when that section of code was written, or if you have any.
But these specified, it turned by the most. They've been what, fifty, forty years, so. And now some of those trees are.
Planting a tree in Newburgh according to, well, according to Robert uh, estimates and and I'll I'll go with that. Uh, fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars, I believe, to plant a tree. So that's the other part of the question that we need to give him direction on.
Yeah, if I may offer a little bit of insight on that, um. The, I believe it's the same subdivision that you're referring to. So that picture that I showed of that section of curving that was popping out was in Springbrook Oaks. So we are allowing a substitution in that case of Mississauga, the black tubelo tree, which is first of all, a better sized tree for the width of those planters. Um, best urban forestry practices don't really prescribe a certain tree for an entire neighborhood or an entire street. There's just too many variables that can come along. There could be a pest or a pathogen, something that happens that wipes out an entire street full of trees or an entire neighborhood, worst case scenario. So that could be something that comes along later, but the street tree list is aimed at providing better information and better options based on planter widths and lengths and environmental conditions such as soils. We do know some of the types of soils in the neighborhoods in the city. So our goal is to try to provide that information to folks who are seeking replacement or who are required um, to replace their trees. The other aspect is is consistent with what we were doing prior to Mr. Sapi's um, comment, which is valid. I do think that he was um, if I understand correctly, that case, he was overplanted by the minimum requirements per um, the landscape chapter. So it I think it would all be okay in terms of if we return to that, but in terms of like volunteer trees or trees that are you know, overplanted in a particular, you know, somebody overplanted that I think the issue is that perhaps there wasn't documentation about Mr. Sapi's property. Is that correct?
Yeah, uh, well, and Mr. Sapi's here this evening, so I don't have to put anyone on the spot, but if you had questions about his street trees, you could certainly ask him, but I think there these are different policy approaches and whether you require the replanting of those trees or not is more of what are your goals in terms of the urban forest for neighborhoods? And at this point, the only controls that we have over that or the only incentives that we have are around street trees and those trees that are in the planter strip between the roadway and the sidewalk, or in some cases are in the front yards of homes. And that's the public space. That's the public domain and that's the area the city historically is has focused on. And so in administering the code, staff has really struggled with that because the language says that the city may require the replanting of these trees. It doesn't differentiate between trees that were uh, specifically required to be planted and those that have just occurred or people voluntarily planted. And so we're bringing this back to you. I can believe that was Mr. Sapi's concern, which is valid, is that this language is ambiguous. Um, and we need to have clear direction on that, so. And we're really just focused on that, on the street tree area.
Could I, could I suggest, Mr. Mayor, that while we consider the policy question among council itself of how it would like to tackle the aspects of future tree code, that it might be good in the meantime to adopt this wonderful tree list because the the tree list, speaking from strictly speaking on behalf of the engineering department, we are handicapped by the tree list that we currently have. There are many places where we would like more insight on power lines above our heads and where we could put a tree. And I was delighted to see the detail here on some of those growth factors. So perhaps these are two issues could be handled, one with a work session around what council would like to see in policy and the tree list being handled separately.
Well, I think that's a good idea. Um, I I think it's time for us to have a whole new set of trees and what the regulations and stuff are for them, but um, I still have a little bit of concern on some of the trees. I mean, if you still have to put these metal boxes around the roots, why why can't we find some trees that pretty much send the roots down and not out? Um, I had to do that at at my office way back twenty-five years ago when I got it. And I just, I got a tree that the roots went down and I didn't have to worry about these metal boxes. I mean, are there different trees that we might be able to put into this list that does that, or did I miss something and they're already doing that?
Correct. So um, I'm happy to speak to that as well. In general, like ninety-eight percent of tree species, their roots are going to go laterally between the like six and twenty-four inches. Um, there are some trees that are more prone to sending out, it's not a a treetop root, but roots that roots that grow deeper. Um, Mississauga is one of them, uh, oak and pine species, although we don't really recommend a whole lot of conifers in our planter strips or in the right of way. Um, but consideration was made for all of the trees on the list that they're they're less prone to surface type roots or roots that are gonna um, potentially do damage to sidewalks or infrastructure. Um, and so those trees I I omitted from the list. Um, and some of those, you know, were on the older list that are no longer considered you know, suitable as trees within planter strips. So a lot of vetting was done between, you know, what our neighboring cities are doing, what OSU recommends, what Durr sort of the the tree guru recommends, uh, who wrote all the books that I studied in school. Um, to try to avoid those types of conflicts.
So in the interest of moving the meeting along, the issue before us is whether or not to approve the uh, street tree list. Uh, I I'd like a call for a vote at this point if somebody is willing to make a motion.
I move that for now we approve the street tree list that was presented and then do a work session with regard to changing the code.
Second thought.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the street tree list as proposed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? All right, the motion passes and I'm sure that we will be looking, city manager, for a uh, work session down the road for furthering the discussion. Thank you. Well, now the reason we're all here.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we did have one public comment on that item from Mr. Sapi. He asked to speak in person.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, he had a written comment. Does he have, did he wish to make a public comment? Robert, are you still there? Oh, I'm sorry, right behind me on, please come on up.
Thank you. My name's Robert Sapi and I'm a local resident. Um, I submitted written testimony last week, which I presume you've all read. Uh, I'll try to cover, I tried to cover all the important facts there, so I'll skip many of them now. For my spoken testimony, I'm going to go somewhat out of character and approach this more from an emotional point of view. This process has made me feel like I've stepped into an episode of the Twilight Zone. I trust all of you know that reference well enough and that you realize I'm only half joking. What was begun as a simple request and should have taken no more than about fifteen minutes of the council's time has resulted in a painfully long and uncertain process. It was over sixteen months ago that I appeared before the council with my simple request. If the council agreed that I shouldn't be obligated to forever replant trees that had no requirement to be planted in the first place, then the council merely needed to express that opinion to staff. I wasn't requesting a resolution. Numerous meetings or other burdens on the council or on staff. I was simply hoping for a brief discussion by the council and if there was a consensus, a statement of such a consensus. My issue could have been resolved quickly. Instead, I received a thank you, nothing more. That's it. No comments, no questions, no follow-up. This is from the council's stated goal of, quote, continue to create and maintain a high level of customer service. I followed up with the mayor on this issue and it resulted by his suggestions in meetings with the community development director, the mayor, and several council members. After all those meetings, the mayor suggested I make an appeal to the council of the staff decision. I made it clear I didn't believe there was such a process, but requested it anyway. You heard that appeal about ten months ago. In that appeal, the city manager acknowledged that there was no such appeal process for the decision. But there were some legal issues with regard to that specific part of the code. For that reason, enforcement was paused and still such until such issues were resolved. Again, a brief discussion and statement of opinion by the council could have resolved my issue. But it was pushed to the future with a large expense still hanging over my head. Here we are, ten months since that meeting, and staff has recommended that the code be cleaned up to make clear, to make a clear and legal requirement that trees that were originally optional must be replaced when removed. Now is the time for the council to weigh in on the matter so that it can be returned at least once more and made official. It actually sounds like at least twice more. I hope the council will see the gross unfairness of adding an expensive burden to homeowners who choose to add trees where there's no requirement to do so and to direct staff to craft language to remove the requirement from the code. Regardless of how the council directs staff, I can at least thank the city manager for pointing out that as the code was written when I received my permit, there could be no penalty applied to me if I choose not to follow staff's decision. While that may resolve the issue in my particular case, my intent in raising this to the council was not just for my own situation, but also for that of other Newburgh homeowners. I am also uncomfortable with not complying with any staff decision. I urged the council to provide a common sense solution for all homeowners and remove this burden of tree replacement. I mentioned the Twilight Zone earlier in my testimony. It's clear that I haven't entered such a place. If I had, it would have lasted thirty minutes one evening. Instead, this has been an unnecessary ordeal of many hours over many days with at least one more, and actually, it sounds like two more council meetings to follow. I don't consider this a high level of customer survey. I thank you and for listening and hope you'll make a fair decision. I did want to add a couple things. The mayor, I I appreciate that you remembered my uh, price quote on the trees. That was for two trees though. So it was seven fifty to fifteen hundred dollars a tree. Um, staff had suggested that uh, my area was overplanted. It was overplanted in the sense that the requirement was zero trees and I put in five of them or something altogether. Um, uh, oh, I wanted to thank the director for being very clear about what the policy choices are before you. I think he nailed it quite well. Um, I did have one concern. Unless I misread it, tonight's meeting was, tonight's issue was listed as informational, not something for which a decision would be made. Maybe I misread that. Um, but I was surprised to hear the council voting on something that was just listed as informational. Anyway, I thank you all and look forward to the future meetings on this matter.
All right, it is seven oh five. Let's take a real quick break and uh, come back at about seven ten. So the next item on our agenda is the granting of the CTE funds. Um, Mr. Walker, if I understood your training correctly, that because I am part of one of these uh, presentations that I need to disclose that, which I'm gonna do right now. But I also understood, I think, that if I have no financial interest in it, that I would be able to vote legally. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, so it might be helpful maybe for me to just take thirty seconds here and kind of give a broad brush stroke. Um, refresher for council on um, kind of the obligations that each member has um, under Oregon Ethics Law. So um, when it comes to conflicts of interest, there are actual or potential conflicts of interest, um, primarily um, impacted based on whether there is an opportunity for pecuniary gain or detriment um, in response to a decision or an action that the governing body takes. So um, you know, Mr. Mayor, you know, in looking at um, your involvement with one of the potential presenters, um, evaluating whether the roles in which you serve or any member of council serves with any of the presenters, whether there's um, an opportunity for pecuniary gain or detriment is the is the real uh, determinative piece. Um, uh, if it is a potential conflict of interest, then um, the law requires disclosure of that conflict of interest. Um, if it's an actual conflict of interest where um, there would be some sort of financial gain or loss, then it's disclosure uh, combined with not participating in the debate or or voting. But in the absence of that um, of that actual conflict, um, members of council are free to to participate in the discussion and vote. I do recommend um, when it comes to disclosure, that even going beyond the 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 potential conflict of interest piece um, is not a harmful uh, approach to take. So in the event that there is some sort of affiliation or involvement, uh, I would generally recommend that's a healthy practice to disclose that.
Uh, Will, when you're talking about potential gain or or loss, is it personal or even just even as a member of the organization in this case that's asking for funding?
Yeah, thank you, Council Kilburg. So when it comes to that financial gain or loss component, it it does involve personal financial gain, but it it does extend beyond that under Oregon's ethics law. So it it's financial gain or loss that extends to a family member um, or a business with which one is affiliated. So when we talk about businesses with which one is affiliated, it could be um, you know, any type of entity or organization. There is a carve-out from that business with which one is affiliated for um, certain nonprofit organizations uh, where someone is only serving as a a member or a director in a non-remuner capacity. So if they're, you know, a member of board directors, there's no financial compensation, you know, or financial loss tied to it and that business is a is a tax exempt under five oh one C of the of the Internal Revenue Code. Um, then then that wouldn't count as a business with which one is affiliated or there there's an exception there.
Thank you. So one of the very first actions that this council took almost three years ago was to sunset the C, the construction excise tax. And one of the reasons that we did that, probably in my mind, the main reason that we did that is because the construction excise tax was a tax that was paid by just a very few people. And that was anybody who purchased a brand new house in the city of Newburgh. Each of those people were taxed one percent of the assessed value of the construction. So on a house itself for five hundred thousand, they probably paid three thousand dollars into this fund. So to get a million dollars in this fund, which is what we're talking about today, you have hundreds of people who unwillingly gave a donation. So I thought that was unfair and at the time you guys did too and agreed with me. The process that, I'm sorry. In December of twenty-three, I called a joint meeting with council and the Affordable Housing Committee, who for Affordable Housing Committee, along with Doug Rocks, our planning director at the time, wrote this program. And uh, in my opinion, and I expressed this before I was mayor to the committee in one of their meetings when they were making the scoring met uh, matrix. They were designing a matrix that was subjective, where I felt it should have been objective. It had too much room for people to score either. It had too much room for people to score either zero points or ten points. And the other thing was that it was designed to favor. Established five oh one companies, not unlike Habitat for Humanity. And in fact, several of the members of that. That board, that committee were on, associated with Habitat. Now, I believe that Habitat is a wonderful organization. I have always respected what they do. I've told many people that that, in my opinion, is the best thing that Jimmy Carter was ever associated with. The fact that to get a house from Habitat, you have to have skin in the game. You have to put. I believe it's four thousand now? No, I'm, I'm guessing. But a certain amount of labor into it, and I think that's a good thing. Yeah, I, I don't believe in giving people handouts. I believe in helping people improve their lives and, and I appreciate what Habitat does. That being said, in my mind, it's not the right thing to do to take money from a hundred or so people. And turn it over to. One organization that's going to build one house or in this case a duplex with that. They don't need City of Newburgh funding for that project. So when I asked you to set up a legacy project, uh, I mean a leg, legacy amount. I felt that a legacy project had to be sustainable. It had to be durable. And it needed to help the most citizens that it possibly could. So I set up to find a legacy project that I thought was fitting. Of using the money that all these people had given unwillingly to the project. And when I found one, when somebody suggested an idea that I thought was pretty good. I sat down with three members of my Rotary Club. And I presented it to them to see if they thought that I had a good idea. And they decided, let's move forward with this. And they said, let's. They didn't say, this looks great. You do it, Bill. So between the three of us, we picked a handful of people. Who are leaders and movers and shakers in our community. Each one of them were picked for their special expertise. Todd Hall is a classmate of mine. He's a very successful financial advisor. And he has been teaching financial advice to Love Inc. for over twenty years. So he is designing the education portion of this. Several of my Rotary members would be here tonight, but this is also the Rotary Golf Tournament Day. So they left on their own. So I guess that's what I want to say about this is how I would handle this. You've got a couple of choices here and Elise is going to go over those with you. But you can either approve what the Affordable Housing Committee done, did. Or you could choose to do something different. And if you weren't comfortable making that decision today, the possibility exists that we could have another round of NOFA. And change the scoring matrix so that it would not favor one type of business. I believe that you're going to, you're in this presentation tonight, you're going to see a project that is definitely worthy. Of the funds that were given up by these people. And at this point, even though I'm not legally required to do so, I am going to recuse myself. I'm going to turn it over to the council president, Elise Yornell, and I'm going to go sit with the presenters tonight.
Okay, you're stuck with me now. So I will call this meeting to order. And declarations of conflicts or interest or abstentions and I think.
This is po, it's just disclosure. For three or four months last summer, and I think in October I quit. I was part of this team that was working to develop this Spark project. And I had the privileges sitting in this room with these very smart, dedicated people. Who were moving forward, but I felt like my capacity was a little too high as far as my commitments, so I stepped aside. So I haven't had any involvement. At all since October.
I will also disclose that I was part of an application that was withdrawn. So that is listed in the packet in case anyone read it. All right, so now we will move to staff reports.
Hey, good evening again, council. I will now be presenting the Affordable Housing Commission's. Recommendations for the Construction Excise Tax Fund awards for the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. To start, I'll touch on the main points of the Construction Excise Tax Fund. Or CET background for those who may not be as familiar. In November of twenty twenty, the city of Newburgh adopted a Construction Excise Tax Fund, which allowed the city to collect. A one percent tax on the value of an eligible building permit. The intention of this revenue stream was that it be used to address affordability issues for homeowners or renters. Within Newburgh for households earning eighty percent or less. Of the median family income, which in twenty twenty three was a hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars for a family of four. The collection of the CET expired on July first of twenty twenty three. And refunds for eligible applicants per ordinance twenty twenty three dash two nine one seven have been processed and finalled. After the subtraction of the four percent administrative fee and refunds, the CET funds remaining totaled one million, four hundred and thirty four thousand, two hundred and eighty seven dollars and ninety two cents. And this slide is just a quick snapshot of the basics of where we are currently with funding. Since the previous award and where we would be after the proposed award recommended by the Affordable Housing Commission this year. Although I do sincerely apologize for my scrupulous error on the total remaining, which should read. Seven hundred and forty, two thousand, nine hundred and thirty four dollars and fifty two cents. And this remaining total does not include the interest that is still accruing in that account. And as a reminder, there are fairly explicit guidelines on how the fund can be used. Firstly, per ORS three two zero point one nine two. And three two zero point one nine five, a four percent administrative fee shall be allocated to the city from the gross CET revenue. And this was calculated prior to any refunds. After the four percent admin fee was deducted, the funds were further broken down into two major categories. For CET collected from residential projects, fifty percent is to go towards developer incentives. Fifteen percent to the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. And thirty five percent is to go to developer incentives and affordable housing programs. And likewise, after the four percent admin fee is deducted, the CET collected from commercial projects. Shall go towards developer incentives and affordable housing programs at a rate of a hundred percent. And next I wanted to touch on eligibility for CET recipients. In general, they should be organizations with an interest or goal. Of developing or preserving affordable housing in Newburgh, such as the types of organizations listed here. Such as governmental subdivisions, community development corporations, local housing authorities, nonprofit housing organizations and so forth. Moving on to the submitted applications for consideration this year, we first have the eligible application. From the Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanity. Their project is the Attached Duplex Project at twelve oh one East Fifth Street. The project creates two new single family homes to be sold at affordable prices to first time home buyers. Their funding request is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, six hundred, three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. And their project falls under the developer incentives category. Next is the Catholic Charities of Oregon, a lending company, Community Wellness Collective in partnership with Providence. Their development project was called The Heart of Newburgh and their application describes a comprehensive. Affordable housing project with recuperative, permanent supportive. And workforce housing to be constructed in two phases on property donated by Providence. They previously were requesting consideration for the legacy dispersal. But subsequent to the Affordable Housing Commission meeting on April the twenty second, they have withdrawn their application. Lastly is the application from Spark, which was deemed ineligible by the Affordable Housing Commission. For not meeting the minimum qualifying threshold for funding. Their project called Spark Newburgh is aimed at the creation of up to twenty dwelling units in two phases. For participants of a Spark curriculum of education, accountability and community involvement. Their project also falls under the category of developer incentive. And this slide is just to talk about process a little bit, the cycle. We posted the CET NOFA on November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. The deadline for applications was April the first of twenty twenty four. And similar to the previous cycle, staff processed applications for the CET fund by reviewing the deeming completeness. Before bringing to them to the Affordable Housing Commission. On April the twenty second, the Affordable Housing Commission met and deliberated on the submitted applications for the CET funds. By the end of the meeting, the commission had four recommendations for city council. And from that meeting, the Affordable Housing Commission's recommendation is to. Firstly, not to award fund monies to Catholic Charities of Oregon et al. Due to non-communication status with city staff. But that they may be considered for a future CET NOFA with a renewed application. And as I mentioned previously, they have officially withdrawn their application on May fifth of twenty twenty five. Second, to fully fund the Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanity's application requests. And to not exceed the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars in order that funds remain for an additional NOFA. Third, to not fund the Spark Newburgh project due to not meeting minimum threshold criteria for funding. And finally, to make a third round CET NOFA posting at the next available opportunity. Therefore, staff is requesting that city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash three nine seven seven, awarding. Three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars to the Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanity. From the Construction Excise Tax Fund monies. And secondly, to provide direction to staff regarding the release of a third notice of funding availability or NOFA. For the remaining CET fund monies.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, we will move to public testimony. Thank you, Eileen. Okay, we have an awesome roster of public testimony tonight, so. Let's start with Shannon from Habitat, if that's okay.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate this opportunity. So I just wanted to just share with you all about our project that we're pursuing at twelve oh one East Fifth Street tonight, so. I just pushed the down arrow for, okay. Okay, so. Uh, I just am going to share about myself first, a little introduction. I've been executive director of Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanity since June of twenty twenty three. I started volunteering with the organization in two thousand nine, been on the board in different committees. I am the former owner of a local company called Shaheilin Property Management. And about the Habitat for Humanity organization as a whole. Our mission is seeking to put God's love into action. Habitat for Humanity brings people together to build homes, communities and hope. Our vision is a world where everyone has a decent place to live. About our, our Habitat affiliates. We were founded in nineteen ninety four by three individuals. In nineteen ninety six, we dedicated our first home and that was at ten sixteen South Pacific Street. Our first restore opened in two thousand nine. And then I'll skip down to twenty thirteen, we had our first veterans' build and our first women's build. In twenty fifteen, we opened our new restore at the North Meridian Street location. And we do fully own that property and building due to extensive fundraising that was done. And we have completed thirty homes, either new construction, rehabilitation or recycling. And then we in twenty twenty three broke ground at our current build site, seven one seven North College Street. That year, we engaged four hundred and forty volunteers. In twenty twenty four, we began with demolition of buildings at twelve oh one East Fifth Street. Were in pre-development for building these two homes. And we also began pre-development for a multi-use project in Dundee. That will be the first of its kind for this organization. And in, and this year, our current status with staff is two full-time. Folks, eight part-time, and then one AmeriCorps member, and that includes our restore staff. We are on track to complete so far, three homes at seven one seven North College Street. And we would like to begin site and infrastructure work at twelve oh one East Fifth Street. We are also purchasing additional land at seven one seven North College. It's behind our current build site. And we would like to develop four homes there eventually. We are on track to either minor or major repairs. We'll, we'll work with twelve, twelve different homeowners from the local community on that. So just to show how much our volunteers contribute, just at our build site. We have had over four thousand nine hundred forty hours. And in calculations of what their labor is worth, that's over a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars worth of work. And that was through mid-May. And in this room, we've got a few board members, we have a restore and build site volunteers. One of our board members who is here, she's also a homeowner with our organization and brought her children. So that's who we are helping, local community folks and those. Local community folks are also serving within our organization. We see it as a reciprocal relationship. And you can see there are two homes there. We're almost complete with those. We're just finishing some site work. And then we have started by pouring the foundation of the third home there. So our homeownership, no, homeownership program in a nutshell. First, we go through a family selection process. We do credit and criminal background checks, income and rental verifications. We serve folks from the local community. They have to have a tie up at least a year to this. Our service area, which is Newburgh, Sherwood, Dayton, Dundee or St. Paul. And they have to make between twenty five to sixty percent of area median income, which is low and very low income folks. We perform a home visit. We rank them upon need, their ability to pay and their willingness to partner. If there is a tiebreaker, need is always the tiebreaker. In this program, a family will perform five hundred volunteer hours called sweat equity. At least two hundred and fifty hours has to be performed by the immediate family, up to a hundred and fifty hours by their friends and family. And up to a hundred hours can be donated by Habitat volunteers themselves. We do require head certified financial education as part of their home buying experience and as well as some home maintenance classes. If, if available, we walk our home buyers through the process of obtaining down payment assistance. And then we also provide a home manual when they move into their home. What did I do? There we go. Currently, we're offering a thirty year mortgage to those folks at zero percent interest plus closing costs. Their mortgage payment maximum is capped at thirty percent of their household, the home buyer's household gross income. And the home sale price is an affordable base price. And that is equal to what a family at eighty percent of area median income could afford to pay for the home at the time of the sale. And the family size is the number of bedrooms plus one. In this case, three bedrooms. On College Street would equal four, four person family per the eighty percent AMI statistic. The monthly principal in their mortgage payment is multiplied by thirty years to come out with their first mortgage amount. The remainder of the ABP is a silent second mortgage and we write off that second mortgage once they've paid off the first. So we participate in land leasing. So we participate in land leasing and permanent affordability. What we do is we lease land to the homeowners for ninety-nine years. So they are buying the structure itself, the home itself. It reduces the home sale price as well as their annual property taxes. We, as a nonprofit, are usually able to get an exemption for the land portion of the property taxes for them. This is shared equity model, meaning they retain equity in the home itself. The only downside to this model, of course, is that they would not get the equity in the land as it appreciates. The home may be sold in the future to a new owner under eighty percent of AMI to keep it in the permanent affordability housing stock. So common themes that we see with our Habitat homeowner families are that they pay off their mortgage between ten to twenty years. It builds generational wealth, forms a legacy in their family. We've seen a lot of children be the first in their family to attend college. The parents are able to save and provide for their kids' education in that way. They also have a pay-it-forward mentality, so we see a lot of people coming back to volunteer time and time again. We see more positive mental health outcomes and better educational outcomes for kids who are not in a rented housing where rent could increase and the parents may have to move. And this is a photo of some of our volunteers and home buyers at the build site on College Street last year. And so that's just a sample of who volunteers with us. So our staff and volunteers, you might notice if you talk to Habitat folks, were extremely dedicated, and that is because of things like community bonding. We're providing safe and decent shelter for people that we see and we get to have relationships with. We see neighborhood improvement. And then, of course, working alongside parents and older children who are current and for future homeowners is just fun. So about our organization with our relationships that we build in the community, these are examples of relationships that we currently have, that we're working with, whether they're sending corporate teams to volunteer at our build site or whether they are vendors on site. Some of them have donated materials and/or services. And of course, churches, we're always looking to partner with them and have their folks volunteer with us. And community groups, like we have had Rotary out, and we will have Rotary out, we've had other community groups as well, so. So February of twenty twenty four, this was when we were demolishing the older structures at the site. We just were not able to rehabilitate this home. That's the only reason we had to tear it down. This is what the site looks like currently. So it is ready to start work when we are able to get plans approved. Our previous two builds are right behind that, twelve oh five and twelve oh nine East Fifth Street. Those are an attached duplex as well. So in our home design for this project, we're doing two stacked homes, four bedrooms each, two baths each. It's on a corner lots, and we will have sound barrier construction for the quality of life for the downstairs folks. We want to make sure nobody feels like they're living in rental housing. And then, of course, it is walkable to downtown, which is always great for affordable housing projects. The downstairs will be ADA accessible for folks with a physical disability. And we are planning on dedicating one of the homes to a veteran family. So in our selection process, we will be choosing a veteran family for one of the homes. And then this will be for at least four-person families due to the size of the home. And then we always hold a public information session when we're getting ready to accept applications. We require, again, a tie to the community and twenty-five to sixty percent of AMI for income. So this is rendering from our architect who is in the room, Jack Chris. He was able to provide this as an idea as we were sketching out what this project might look like, so. And then CET funds would cover our remaining project budgets beyond lift funds. We were able to obtain lift funds through the state for site and infrastructure work. It allowed, the lift supplemental funds also pays for a little bit more than site work, some admin costs and things. It would fund a veterans' build, an ADA-accessible home, and of course, be affordable homes for two local families. We do hope that it will free up some resources for developing the next eight homes in our pipeline. And then, in summary, again, it's housing two local families. The homes will be walkable to downtown, and the mortgages will be affordable for the families. So thank you so much for having me here.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Scott Parish. All right, I am going to change course and go ahead and call up whoever is presenting for Spark. And then we'll do a public comment after that, so I think it's Doug Kane.
Thank you, Elise. Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. And I want to start off by first introducing myself. I'm Doug Kane. I currently serve as the Chief Philanthropy Officer over at Providence Newburgh Health Foundation at Providence Newburgh Medical Center. A little bit more about me, I've been with Providence a little over ten years, a little over five and a half years here in Newburgh. And part of the reason why I'm part of this great housing initiative is because I believe this is something that's going to be really powerful for the city of Newburgh. I believe it's a key demographic that could use the support and the help, and so that's really why I'm part of it. Another thing about me as well is that I also am the immediate past president of the Newburgh Early Birds Rotary Club. And the last two years, I've served on as a board member at City, Newburgh City Club. And starting in September, I will be the president of Newburgh City Club. So I really believe in this community, and I really love to be a part of this community as well. Did we want to?
Sure. My name is Brian Nappin, and I worked for Austin Industries. I worked for ADEC prior to that, coming with the community in two thousand and eleven. We moved to the community about eight years ago. Absolutely love it. Our kids are involved with the area. And we've seen a huge need in the area for affordable housing. Heard a lot of personal stories, and we were approached with this about a year ago. And it's important, right? We can see people who are suffering, who can't get into houses and either have to leave their jobs in the area or have to have other alternatives. It makes some really tough choices, so.
I'm here for moral support. You know who I am.
Yeah, yeah. Well, folks, yeah, tonight, you know, we are talking about a great affordable housing project. It's called Spark Newburgh. And before I share what Spark Newburgh is, I want to start off by kind of painting a picture. So imagine you have a teacher. This teacher has a student who is really struggling and wants to help this student out for school, but just cannot do it because she has to get home, she has to pick up her daughter at daycare, she's got a forty-five-minute commute, and she just cannot invest the time that she would like to invest. Then you've got a gentleman who works in a manufacturing plant here in town, very similar situation. If he doesn't get off his shift right at the time of the shift ends, it's most likely he's going to miss his son's final baseball game of the year. Why? Because he has to commute elsewhere in order to work here in Newburgh. And then you've got the healthcare worker. They just got off a twelve-hour shift. They're tired. They've got to jump in their car and commute home a long distance. They gotta go to bed, wake up, and do it again the next day. And those are the people that we are, you know, these are examples that are, they're not strangers. They're our teachers, they're our nurses, they're our employers. And without action, we risk losing them. You know, we want people who want to be here in Newburgh to invest in Newburgh, and the best way we can do that is for them to, to help them make a difference. These are people who will make our community thrive, and yet no longer can afford to live here in Newburgh. Their dream is to own a home of their own, but we know in today's world, it seems impossible for many. The rising cost of housing has forced hard-working families into impossible choices. Imagine working tirelessly, yet owning a home feels impossible. You probably already know this, but the median home cost is four hundred and twenty-six thousand. The average rent is, or the median rent is about fifteen hundred. And there's a housing deficit in the state of Oregon at a hundred and forty thousand units statewide. And so we are here tonight to talk about Spark. And Spark, what is Spark? Well, Spark is a new initiative that comes alongside working families who work in the Newburgh area but cannot afford to, or who want to work in the Newburgh area, but they cannot afford to own a home in Newburgh. These are great employees for our local businesses and very important people to our city. Spark will assist these individuals, their families, by helping them become homeowners and provide the skills and training to get there. Spark will also assist in providing long-term stability as well. So let me explain more. So our plan is to purchase property to build a twenty-unit housing facility, housing for up to twenty families at a time. Our plan is to also do this project in two phases. Ideally, we'd like to do it in one, but we're very reasonable here, and we think that two phases is going to be much more reasonable. Phase one would start off with ten units at a cost of around four million dollars. Phase two would complete ten more units, and it'd be around three million dollars. So overall, this will be about a seven-million-dollar project. Down, right? Okay. So kind of the participant eligibility criteria, you know, we are looking, these are for households challenged with attaining homeownership, like I had mentioned. And it's for families that are earning less than eighty percent area median income. And right now in Yamhill County, that's around, for a family of four, that's around ninety thousand dollars per year. So anything below that. These families agree to participate in coaching and accountability, including finance classes, and we'll get into that here in a moment. But we're also looking at the boundary that we want people to live and eventually reside in the Newburgh-Dundee School District boundary. We feel that that is a good boundary for them to reside in. The application, kind of the participation process here is that interested parties will apply. They will participate in an application and an interview process. And we are going to be partnering with Love Inc. on this to kind of guide us in that process. Once, a successful applicant will move into one of the program housing units, and then they will participate in a forty-month, forty-eight-month program. Monthly fee will be assessed as well to offset all administration and maintenance and program costs. Now, the financial training that I mentioned here just a moment ago, participants in the program will benefit from coaching and budgeting, expense tracking, emergency planning, debt management, credit management, investment strategy, retirement planning, insurance evaluation, tax planning, and ongoing education, enhancing personal finance skills. We do have a few partners, Love Inc. is one of those partners. We've also embold, Community Credit Union has expressed interest in supporting this as well. And of course, you heard from Rob Felton earlier from George Fox University. George Fox is also going to be offering assistance as well. And so that's kind of the financial training I was talking about. Upon successful completion of the program, the participants may apply for a grant for up to two and a half of their aggregate program fee to be used toward a down payment on a home of their own. Now, what do we consider to measurement of success? You know, we see this program as something that, this can go on forever. You know, this is a program that can go on in perpetuity, and that's our goal here. We're hoping on an eighty percent rate of completion. We do understand that life happens. Sometimes people have to drop out of a program. And so we recognize that, you know, it's never going to be one hundred percent, but we do, we would measure that at eighty percent would be a doggone good, great success. Another thing that we do want to, we will encourage those who participate in the program, we want them to develop strong community connections. We want them to get involved in our community. We want them to get to know people. We want them to volunteer. We want them to serve. And so that's something that we are going to strongly encourage, that they will be a part of as well. And then, obviously, the goal is we hope for homeownership within five years completion of the program. So just a little bit of a structure about Spark Newburgh. We are right now in the process, five oh one C three, we are impending as of now. We have done everything we can as of now, and we're just kind of waiting the process out.
An Oregon nonprofit corporation, and you filed our ten twenty-three. It can just take a few months for that to go through the IRS paperwork.
Yeah, yeah. We also have a board of directors, and we have some funding. We're already working on some funding. One of the things that we did, we did apply for a grant with the community. It's called the Community Initiated Project, and it's part of the Senator Merkley's program, and we did apply for a two-million-dollar grant. We're hoping to get an answer in September. That's the latest on that. And we also have begun some private funding as well. We do have a, we've received a private grant invitation as well. And of course, we're here with the city of Newburgh, hoping that city of Newburgh will also help fund this project. And also, the application and the curriculum administration, like I had mentioned, some of our local partners, Embold has agreed to help out George Fox as well as Love Inc. You guys have any comment on that?
That's great.
Okay. These are the board of directors that have been put together. Todd Hall, Rob Felton, myself, Mayor Bill, Dennis Lewis, Brian, Mike and Peggy Taylor. And our officers as of now is Bill, myself, and Brian. We do have some endorsements in the community. We have an endorsement not just from Rob at George Fox, but also Dr. Robin Baker has put in his endorsement as well. ADEC, thank you, Scott Parish, for that. SEDCOR, and a big thank you to Nate Wildfire, who did speak earlier this evening from the Missing Middle Housing Fund as well. But these are some of our other endorsements in the community as well. So so this is what we are asking. Our request this evening is a one million dollars to purchase the land and finalize the plans and begin building the twenty-unit housing facility. With this funding, we would be able to buy the land and begin that process. And as I mentioned earlier, we plan two phases, starting with ten units. But we want the plot of land to include all twenty units, and that is why we're here tonight. And you know, what we just want to mention as well is that, you know, we do see this as a long-term program. And this will give up to, not just at one time, twenty families, a place to live, a place to reside, and a place to be able to provide the tools and training for long-term stability. And so we really strongly believe in this program, and I think with your help, we can make that happen for many, many families. Any questions?
We'll do questions, but if anyone else would like to share, like Bill or anyone from your side?
Yeah.
I would like to point out that one of those things that Habitat brought up is that when people get in a house that they own, they begin to create wealth. There's no, there's no mystery to the fact that people who get into houses become the first member of their family to attend college. This is exactly the type of thing that we're trying to create here in Newburgh, is an avenue for people to begin to create wealth, not just for them, but for their family, their children, and their great-grandchildren.
Brian.
I think one final comment I have is I was having some people over this past week. He teaches at George Fox, and he doesn't know I'm on the Spark program, but he was commenting. He's like, man, we're losing, you know, a few good people. I was like, well, tell me about it. He's like, they can't afford to live in town. They can't afford to live in the surrounding areas. He's like, it's a real concern, even, you know, someone who has a very stable job. The price of housing is expensive and continues to get more expensive. So we're losing some really good people from our community. And we're very passionate about this because it's not just a solution. We're providing a Band-Aid, but this is something that we hope can make a real a real difference in the community and can be a catalyst for change.
Hey, great, great presentation again. Thank you. And then would Scott and Tara like to also give public comment? All right, let's start with Scott.
Hi, my name is Scott Parish. I'm the chairman of the board at ADEC. You know, I want to take you back. When Ken and Joanne started ADEC, Joanne wanted really good benefits for the community because she saw people that worked all their life, and they got sick at the end of their life, and they lost everything to medical bills and whatnot. Today, that medical bill is housing. ADAC's twelve hundred workers have a hard time finding places to live these days. It's just, it's a real challenge, the last five years with the inflation that's taken place. And, um, it's always been our value statement. We have, what we want is people to come to work for us, start families and stay for twenty, thirty years, we have a great retirement program. That's our sweet spot. And we need places for them to stay and, and be able to build in the community, it'd be nice if it was here. Unfortunately, the people that started ADAC have to drive the furthest. And they're the least able to really do that, to pay the gas money, they probably don't have the newest cars. And that hurts their relationship with ADAC at times because stuff happens when you're that far away and things, you know, happen at home and whatnot. And this is, uh, this program is something that I haven't seen before, I really like the education. You know, when I got my start, I got an old beater car. And I painted it, I rebuilt the engine, and then I got my next car. And I painted it and I fixed it up and I got my next car, and it was a new car. And I slowly learned how you do that. In today's world, I don't think you have some of those opportunities, and I really like that about this program. You're teaching people how you budget, so you don't get wiped out two years out. You're getting the financial and all the things you need to be successful. So I think this program will really help people. And I think you'll have a very high success rate because of the program that they put together to make this successful. I also like the scale of it, um, you know, be able to do twenty housing, I think, you know, the communities have to come together. But I think a start here would do a lot to say the community, we're serious about this, we're moving forward. Let's come to the table and let's make this thing happen, so that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Now Tara.
Hi there, thanks for having us. I'm Tara Colton, I work for the Allison and Spa. Hired as the Spa Director in two thousand nine and most recently this past January became the interim general manager. So I've had the opportunity to have more intimate conversations with a lot more of the property. Um, and I'm kind of seeing the same thing that I knew within my own department of the spa. Across all divisions of what the continual problem is. And it's really been, there's two big challenges from day one of being a part of the property and being a part of this community. And that is, uh, that, that works against us as an employer, um, to retain good talent. And that is childcare and affordable housing. So still remains, and the housing conflict, of course, has gotten worse by the year. And it's, it prohibits us from being able to recruit great talent, for one. But then to really hang on to them. So similar story is what everyone else has said. You end up having these horrible conversations with people who love the community, they love working for the Allison. They love, uh, the family that stands behind us and working for a family-owned company. But they choose in the hospitality industry to go on to. A competitor in Portland in the city when they don't want to move to the city. But they can walk to that employer, they have to, they're made, they're, they put in a position where they have to make these decisions. There's nothing around us, um, for them to, to get into. They have the American dream, they want to buy a home, but they don't, they just, as much as they want to stay and work for us, they just don't see it happening. And so they're asking for, uh, a raise that we just can't responsibly do. And we have to say, so sorry, but we understand that you're going to go work for this other hotel. And that's devastating, we of course are one of the best, um, hotels in Oregon. We want to recruit the best, we want to keep the best, we want to support them in every way that we can. We do a, a, um, a really, really thorough wage analysis in the market. A job, job market analysis to make sure that we are paying not just fair wage, but we're at the top of the market to recruit these people. And it's still not enough. So, um, we know that we're doing our part, we just need more help in other ways from the community. And I think it'd be something that would really last. The accountability behind this program, the, the logic of how it's been put together is just brilliant. Something totally different, I do think it would, it would be sustainable. And I think it'd be something that Newburgh would be really proud of. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, let's do first recommendations from staff. And then I'm going to provide the opportunity to counsel to ask questions to both present, presenters as part of council deliberation. So, um, recommendations from staff.
Uh, the recommendations from staff are in accordance with the, um, recommendations from the Affordable Housing Commission. To adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash three nine seven seven. Awarding three hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars to the Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanity. From the Construction Excise Tax Fund monies. And to provide direction to staff regarding the release of a third notice of funding availability for remaining CET fund monies.
Okay, and then for the record, if, if you would be willing to, because I think Spark just gave a. Great presentation and I'm sure we're going to have questions here during deliberation. If for the record, you would not, if, if you would mind, um, sharing what minimum threshold of the scoring grid was not met by Spark. So that we can also consider that when we're in deliberation.
Of course. Do you, now? Okay, sure. So. The scoring rubric, uh, I'm. I should have looked up the date, but I know Will was part of that meeting where Affordable Housing Commission and City Council members met. And were deliberating on what type of criteria to use for the CET. Fund monies, it was deliberated at length. And it was decided to use something that the Affordable Housing Commission had previously used. So that is the approved criteria, that's what we used previously in the, the first round CET. Deliberations and assessments, so that is what was carried forward. I think, um, and it's attachment A on that application form. So I think the main thing that we're, that we're looking at is that minimum threshold criteria. Numbers one through five. Seven through fourteen are the scored application criteria where you can award points. And that could vary and that may be considered a little bit more subjective. However, one through five are just, are just that, that minimum threshold criteria. I'm happy to read through those. Number one, the project is considered an eligible use.
I'm sorry, not to, I, I, I am interrupting you. Can you share what was not met?
Yeah, I'm about to do that. So, one through five, um, I can read them or not read them. One, uh, was deemed the project may meet this criteria. Number two, the project does not meet this criteria. Number three, the project does not meet this criteria. Number four, the project may meet this criteria. And for number five, the project partially meets this criteria. And I'm, like I said, I could read those to you if you would like.
I don't think you need to read them, I think that just for counsel to know when we're talking in deliberation. If we do discuss adjusting the scoring grid, I would like us to know which thresholds were difficult for a. Forming organization trying to build capacity, um, that will be part of my question, so that's helpful.
Okay. Yep, that's exactly it. I can speak a little bit more to that if you want a little bit more input on what was discussed. During the Affordable Housing Commission meeting on each of those.
I think it would be helpful because I think when we get into deliberation, those are going to be some of the questions that are asked.
Certainly. So number one, uh, the project is considered an eligible use under activity under section three and benefits household earning. Less than eighty percent of the median family income for a period of at least sixty years. Description of project states the applicants will be paying market rate rents, but does not state for what type of dwelling unit. Most market rate housing units would not be affordable to someone making eighty percent AMI or less. However, the application materials state that dwelling units created will be affordable in perpetuity. So again, um, the project may meet this criteria. Number two, the project is ready for implementation with documentation to demonstrate financial feasibility. So the description of the project states that the project is not ready for implementation. Likewise, the applicant has applied for other grants that are yet to be awarded. So it was deemed that there's some uncertainty about cost coverages and what is being proposed. The third criteria, the project includes the acquisition of property. The identified property is currently available for acquisition. And that the applicant has secured either a purchase option or a letter of interest from the seller. If the applicant is also applying for federal funding, review procurement requirements and limitations before obtaining a purchase option. So the project does not meet this criteria as no property has been identified or acquired. The applicant is requesting that City Council convene to approve payment at a later date. If property is found that is suitable for the project, it was deemed that this adds uncertainty to project feasibility. Number four, the relocation of existing residents will be minimized. And when necessary, the applicant has included accurate relocation assistance costs as part of the project pro forma. It was deemed that the project may meet this criteria. The application material, materials do not describe a contingency if participants are not able to purchase a home. Through program parameters, e.g., if participants do not make enough money to save for a down payment on a home. Or afford the monthly mortgage payments of a market rate single-family dwelling, uh, where do they go? And lastly, um, criteria five. The proposed, and the proposal demonstrates that the construction excise tax funds are the most appropriate funding source for the project. Provide a description of financial gap that includes funding sources or demonstrates budget constraints that limit the ability to pay or finance projects. Uh, it was deemed that the project partially meets this criteria. Application materials offer some in- insight into budget, but not a detailed account of what each funding source is and where the gap lies. That the CET fund would bridge.
Okay, do we have any questions for Leanna? Hey, thank you. Okay, so during council deliberation, I think it would be best, since there are probably questions for both applicants. I think it would probably be best if we start with question, if anyone has any questions that they want asked before we move into deliberation. So starting with Habitat, so I don't know if Shannon you'd like to come up and bring a forward member or just yourself, either way. But I think, um, anyone ha- want to ask any questions of Shannon or Habitat? Counselor Kilburg.
Hey Shannon, nice job, um, I'm a fan of Habitat, I don't know, I don't know who wouldn't be a fan of Habitat. I do have a question about the end of your presentation. My understanding was it's going to, uh, make it possible to build this house on East Fifth. And at the very end, you said it would free up resources for the next four, or was it eight houses?
Yeah.
So, um. So if you don't get the funding, would you be able to build the house on East Fifth?
Yes, so, um, we do, so what I meant by freeing up resources is we do have restore revenue that's regularly coming in. We also service our own mortgages for families that have purchased a home from us. And so, uh, we could allot those resources towards this project. However, uh, we have a lot of homes that are coming up, so it would free up those, like, we can save. We can have cash reserves to be prepared for, uh, site work and, you know, all the pre-development tasks that we have to do for those.
So would it be fair to say that whether or not you were to get this funding, you could, you could complete this project on East Fifth? But it would, it would just make things tighter going forward? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any other counselors have any questions for Shannon today? Okay, thank you so much. And I apologize, but there was a public comment that was missed, um, that I, that was written and, um. Dropped by tonight, so that, that was from Casey Banks. So the council has that to take a look at before we get to a decision. So now, um, I will invite Spark up to answer any questions that the council has. Who would like to kick us off here? Hey, Counselor Turgason.
Thank you so much for your presentation, I, um, I would love some clarification, maybe I just kind of got a little bit lost in the picture. So you're going to have these twenty units, I guess I'm curious, I'll give you a multi-part question. How you're going to go about identifying the families that will be in there and what sort of supportive, because it sounds like it will, at some level be like a supported housing. Arrangement, so like who you'll be partnering with around that supported housing component. Um, I'm also curious how you're anticipating individuals, so they'll be paying rent and a monthly fee. How are we anticipating that they will transition to homeownership, like are you going to give them funding for a down payment? Are we expecting that they will be able to save? I guess I would, I'm confused how they're going to go from your supported housing to homeownership, so I'd love some clarity there.
You asked how we're going to identify people, uh, to be participate. We will put out announcements and we anticipate that there's going to be some interest in taking part of this program. The program is a, it's a training program. It's, uh, given somebody who doesn't think that they make eighty-five thousand dollars a year and they don't think that they can afford a house. And by taking part in this program with our various partners, Love Inc. is one of them. Dave Ramsey, um, has a program that, that works and we might offer that as well. George Fox also offers, uh, the same sorts of training. So we're going to start by helping them, you know, you've heard the Dave Ramsey commercials, every dollar has a name, every, you know, budget. Every dollar has a purpose, make sure that they go. Now, they are going to pay, we call it a fee, and the reason we're calling it a fee, and by the way, the building is not an apartment, it's a dormitory. We're intentionally trying not to establish a, uh, tenancy agreement. So, then, this is going to be more like a college, uh, program. And they will be able to stay there for up to four years. They will pay a monthly fee, and if fifteen hundred is the, uh, is the amount. Then that's the amount that they will pay every month, and they'll be expected to pay it every month. Because we own the building, because we are providing most of the training with volunteers and not paid staff. We are going to be in a position that at the end of their completion, at their successful completion. That we will write them a check at closing, within five years of them completing to buy a house. And that check, we anticipate could be as high as forty to fifty percent of the monthly fee. So at the successful completion, they will have reordered their priorities. They will understand that it takes sacrifice to buy that house. And they will be in the position and to buy the house. Once they get in the house, then they're going to be able to, you know, things get more comfortable after five, six years, then they can start to. You know, buy the cars that Scott talked about and so forth. I'm speaking too much. Does that answer your entire question or?
So you're anticipating that you'll be able to hold and reserve a portion of their monthly fee?
So yeah, I'm going to clarify that too, the program fee would be to cover the costs of the program, the training they would be going through. And, um, part of the reason we're trying to purchase it is to have it be affordable. And, um, part of the reason we're trying to purchase it is to have it be affordable so we can provide a grant. So at the end of the program, successful completion, they apply for a grant. And so what we want to do then is to be able to help them by not only providing training, but provide something tangible. Where they can go out and start searching for a home in the area and then if they find one within five years. Um, then they can apply for a grant and apply that directly toward a down payment. Um, so they would have, uh, head start and getting their foot in the door and equity.
Can I keep going here? How many hours a week are you anticipating they'll be involved in curriculum and education?
It's a great question. We're not quite sure on that yet. Part of it is working with our many developers, developing what that program looks like.
Yeah.
Um, we don't want it to be overwhelming, but we want it to be substantive enough where it's making a real difference.
So I was just curious about like, okay, I know ADEC works like swing shifts and so opportunities to make sure that it's accessible for everybody. I guess I'm also curious about the dormitory model with kids and families, like will there be kitchens? What, how are you anticipating dorms, dormitory style with kiddos?
It's actually gonna be individual apartment-like things, a dormitory concept, but it's not gonna be. A dormitory with a common kitchen or anything, each other own very distinctive stuff.
Have you all sketched out operational costs? I know you're hoping that like fifty percent would be able to go back, but I didn't, in the pro forma that I saw, I didn't. See operational costs, so I was curious about what you're anticipating would be your overall operational.
We do have operational costs, uh. With this, and again, it depends on how much that we get upfront, uh, as we're, um, applying for it. We're looking at about four hundred thousand dollars a year in operational costs between, um. Setting aside money for graduation grants, uh, we're planning on having property management to help, um. Take care of the property, uh, labor associated with some of the training and onsite as well. Uh, insurance, legal costs, accounting, all those other exciting costs that come with it. It's about four to thousand bucks.
Go for it. I'm gonna let everyone ask all their questions at once.
I guess there's one other question I have that kind of like lends itself back to the like accessibility question. Um, I love, love Inc., they're an amazing program. I've had the blessing of working with them for years in my professional capacity. Um, I'm an alum of George Fox and I know that Dave Ramsey is an amazing program for so many people. I guess I'm curious. Is there going to be an, an expectation of a faith-based component? Um, just knowing that like Dave Ramsey programming does have a pretty heavy faith-based aspect and. How would we maybe revamp that from some of our families if that's not a shared value that we have?
I would say no, I would say that's not really gonna be a criteria.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Turgason. Now Counselor McBride and ask all the questions you have.
Okay, all right. So. The criteria for how you're going to pick the people to be in this facility. Is it, what if somebody comes and applies that doesn't work at Providence? George Fox or ADEC? Can, can they be considered for this? I mean, any, anyone, correct? All right.
It's absolutely not any of those organizations that they don't get any preference with it. Um, that's not a, a reason for the criteria at all. Yep, not a consideration.
We put the boundaries of the Newburg Dundee School District area, so any, anybody who's employed in those boundaries would be eligible.
Okay, so how is maintenance going to be taken care of? If you're setting some of the money aside to give back to them at the end of this forty-eight months. Wh- what happens if? You know, somebody that's living there ends up kind of trashing it? Or they're just normal maintenance costs over the years come up, who pays for those?
We actually have that as part of our model. We have a maintenance cost. We analyzed it, um, three or four different ways of what the cost of maintenance. For a similar type complex would be, and that's included in the projection. Good question.
Okay, is there? Who, who has the overall, um. Watch, watch care, I guess, over, uh, you know, who's gonna be in charge to maintain? Uh, how this is, is running, if it's gonna be based on a lot of volunteers. After a while, volunteers get burnt out, they get tired. Is there somebody that's going to have authority over? To make sure that this doesn't just kind of fall apart in ten years?
So there is a board of directors that is currently in place over that. We have in the budget an executive director. That would help out with that because we all day jobs and so we're not able to do that. I think it's a great point. Um, but we would have an executive director who would be responsible for that.
And, and that would be a, a paying position and it would be based on. Grants and things to help pay for that. Okay, do you have land already picked out that you're ready to purchase? Or they've given you the indication that they would sell it to you for this project?
Well, this happens to be my area. Um. When you're buying property, it does not make any sense to go try to make a deal with somebody. Unless if you have the means to close the deal. Because more likely he's gonna decide, she's going to decide that. Boy, I said I wanted to sell this property, you talked me into it. And, you know, it's taken you too long, so I'm gonna go ahead and put it on the market. Uh, besides that, when you get out there in a market like that, it just rides the cost up. So we have identified several pieces of property that would be suitable for our needs. And once we have the means, which would be the, the money from, uh, the CET funds. Then we will go out and get serious and find a piece of property. I would of course expect council, uh, to make the disbursement of the funds contingent on. Uh, spending it on that piece of property at closing.
So, um, gosh, I just lost what I was thinking. Oh, so let's. How are you going to, will there be people checking up on them? Let's say somebody that's in this program. Um, how many times can they miss? Going, and I, by the way, I love Dave Ramsey. Uh, the principles behind, you know, how to handle your money and all that, I think is great. And I love that component of teaching people how to use it. So will there be somebody checking up on them? If they miss three or four programs, can, can they make it up? Or are they off the program? Is there real clear expectations of people going in? You are required to do this, 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 and this. If you don't, then you're out of the program. And how hard is it going to be to get them out once they get in? Because tenant laws are much better for the tenants than they are for the owners. Unfortunately. You wanna?
Yeah, well, I, I think we, we definitely have, will establish very strict rules on, you know, these are the rules behind. You know, if you're gonna agree to this program and, and it's gonna be set upfront in the application process that. You know, these are the rules that you have to abide by and, you know, if, if you don't, then you'll have no choice but to, but to exit the program.
So we've worked with legal on some tenant landlord issues that could potentially be sticking points. And so we've tried to establish it in such a way that there's clear expectations, right? As long as you're part of the program and participating in the program, it's not a problem. If you decide not to be part of this, hey, that's not a problem too, you know, you can self-select out. We're trying to find ways for people to be included in the program and make them successful, rather than get them out though. So if you miss a couple, um, we're gonna be working with people. We have a, an outline of what the program is, but we don't have all the details of, you know, miss two, you're okay, three, you're out. That's not the way it's gonna be. We're gonna try to have it be so people can be successful inside the program.
And keep in mind that anybody who volunteers for this program is gonna be motivated to want to successfully complete it. So that, that is our intention is to help everybody complete the program successfully.
Okay, Counselor Ridley, do you have any questions for them?
I love the program. I'm super excited for it. Of course, I'm a little skeptical. But you guys seem to be pretty smart and kind of thought of everything. Um, I guess what I'm wondering is. Exactly how you're gonna do all the money that they pay you. Are you investing that? How are you accruing? I see him shaking his head. How? And, you know, this is a five-year thing, so, I mean, I look at how much my house is appreciated in five years, so, I mean. Whatever money they accrue, will that be a decent down payment at that time? Or, you know, how, what does that look like when they're done with the program? And let's say it's not enough for a down payment, then what?
It's a great question. So I wouldn't say it's accruing money. They can apply for a grant at the end of it. So what we really wanna do, we're trying to do is get funding from different sources and get funding, so there is enough. Um. Operationally, as well as with the building, that we can accumulate more money for them to apply for a grant. At the end of the program and that's, um, I guess why we have such a passion for going after it and providing it to make it easier for the families that are involved in the program.
So they will have a small, they'll have an account with you? No, not an account. Okay, so the money this is, okay.
Because if you get to two, year or two and a half of the program and you say, I'm out of here, I don't wanna do this anymore. They're not gonna get any money with that. Upon successful completion, they can apply for a grant with the program. And that's their grant pool, um, who we would provide support to if they can find a house.
So, so you're accruing, is that, maybe that's not the right word. So you're, you're accumulating money. And then you're going and saying, hey, I have this much money, can we? And you're using that amount that you've accumulated to apply for a grant? Is that how you're doing it?
And there's, it tells you need to be worked out around that. We'll be accumulating money. And you don't know how much money that's gonna be because there's a lot of factors with that. Depending on how much we get in operations, how many people are completing, how many people are dropping out of the program. But the intent is to use as much as we can to help provide a grant to those individuals so you do successfully complete the program.
Doing that. Counselor McBride. Okay, Counselor Ridley.
Okay, the last one was, um, the five oh one C three. You guys are in the process. When do you think that'll be complete?
So we applied for it in March. Um, they take a few months. We hope in the next month or two we'll get that, but it really depends on when the IRS processes it. Processes it, and right now, um, things are a little bit slow with the IRS. Um, but it's in motion. I checked on it again today and they said, yeah, it's still in motion, so.
And did you submit the long form or the easy form?
Uh, that's a great, I don't know.
That's a big actually thing we need to get answered, because if it's the long form, that could be like two years. And a lot of people make that mistake, especially lawyers, when they file that document.
So our lawyer anticipated it was gonna be in a three to four month. Uh, we, we just filed for one a few months ago and it was able to be completed in that timeframe.
Okay, so. Why, why are you giving grants instead of the money that's set aside? Why aren't you just giving that money to them? Uh, cause how, how, I mean, what if they don't qualify for the grant somehow? Or, or the grant money dries up out there or something? Or did I miss something in your presentation here?
Um, why don't we just accrue that for them? Because it's really not owner, the challenge is if you get through part of the program and get through two and a half years, what do you do with that accrued money? Because it's not really owed to someone who doesn't complete the program. Well, we're trying to encourage just people to see it through to the completion where you don't have people that are in the program for twenty-four months. They say, you know what, that's enough for me. I really don't wanna continue this. I don't need to hear about the, I don't know, insurance part of it and the investment part of it, right? I have the piece I want, I've got some money, that's all I need. We're really trying to have, um, someone who's gonna be successful in owning a house for the long term, right? And we really wanna set them up for success and that's why we have a requirement that they have to go all the way through it.
But. Please understand that a large portion of where the money, the grant that they're going to be eligible for comes from is from their payments. What their, their monthly fees. So the longer that they're in the program, the more that the spark. Uh. The Spark Initiative is going to be able to accrue money. Uh, and that would allow us to be more generous, uh, when they do complete.
So let's say they do complete it. You're still gonna give them a, a, a grant that, you're not just gonna give them the money that you've thrown into this. Big pot that they've been paying. They've, they finished the program, flying colors. So you're still gonna give them a grant in order for them to have the money for a down payment instead of giving them the money? Well, are they gonna have to pay the grant back at, in any way, shape or form? And where does the grant come from? Is it gonna come from a, a bank that's gonna do it for free or?
No, it'll come from us. Our money is gonna be deposited at, uh, at the savings loan here in town.
I wanna try to summarize it.
Okay.
In math. Okay, so if there is theoretically twenty households, right? Get that right? Alright, twenty households paying, let's say fifteen hundred dollars a month in fair market value rent. You're setting aside seven hundred and fifty dollars a month because half of it could be applied for. If they make it through all four years of the program, so seven hundred and fifty is what their incentive is to stay in the program for the forty-eight months. So seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for four years, the maximum investment that each household will have access to. Is thirty-six thousand dollars. So thirty-six thousand dollars is what I would qualify for if I do the forty-eight month program to apply for as a grant. To be invested in a down payment of a house within five years of graduating the program. So seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the maximum per year or after four years of the program. So I don't wanna say this because it's not kind, but hopefully not everyone graduates. Because you'll have to come up with seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay out at year four or forty-eight months if everyone was able to find housing. But I understand the model you're banking on, not everyone making it through. I think eighty percent's not reasonable. I think, to be honest, sixty percent is dang good. So I think you could guess on that they're hedging their bets probably accurately. That that money would be available to those individuals and it is, um. Does that? Am I close? I just took random numbers. I don't know if that's.
I'd say the theory is correct.
The theory, I don't know about.
The theory is correct. What we're looking at, if I can speak there, it's, we, uh, it's, it's more expensive than that for the program fee. Because the program fee encompasses more than just that, um, cost of housing with that too. There's an administrative element. Repairs and maintenance, like you talked about, we have twenty-two hundred dollars in the model to start out with for the program fee. And we're looking at thirty percent. We're assuming that eighty percent of the people make it through the program. And we have, um, a number that drop off. And as a result, it's thirty percent with some conservatism built in there too. Um, just to make sure we're not setting expectations falsely.
Counselor Kill, yeah, absolutely. Okay, that's fine.
I thought the presentation was great, but it's hard to describe something this, with this many layers and complexity. But your, the material you provided was outstanding. That if people took the time to read the, the material in our packets, it was excellent. So I really appreciate that detail. Um, I, I am so excited about this. I'm, I'm almost shaking. Um, part of it is I, I sat in the room with these people who are stellar. And others like Dennis and the Taylors aren't here tonight. Not just really smart people, but committed and passionate about this. And wise people with lots of experience in business and legal and all kinds of areas that are coming into play here. Um. And I also, I'm, I know that the Affordable Housing Commission developed their matrix that they would use, they wanted to use. And chose to use to make their. And chose to use to make their recommendations to this. Uh, board, this, this body, that city council, but I don't feel like the city council is obligated. To make our decision based on those criteria that they used in making their recommendation to us. Part of it is you're new, I mean, it, it's, it's an amazing initiative, but. It's that catch twenty-two of how can I get a grant until I can show I've had a grant? You have to have something to start with, and this would be such a boon to our city, and that's part of what. Our job is, is to see what we can do about affordable housing in Newburgh. Um, and as I understand it, the, the amount that people pay is reasonable. But it, it still allows for, um, if this is all paid for with gifts, the property, the building. Um, maybe even the, the executive director's salary, very little of what these people pay has to come out. From what is being accumulated for grants, so that the fact that it's. Uh, charitable organization would play into that a lot, I think. I think that's all, that's all I, I have to say, I, I'm, I'm ready to vote, or maybe we choose one and then the other to vote on, I don't know.
Any, before I give my comments, I want everyone to make sure they've had enough, so, um, Counselor McBride.
So, I, I just wanna make some comments, um, I love this program. And I like the idea, I think it's a piece in the puzzle, like there's more things that we need to be looking at. Like creating some better paying jobs around here, and I think that needs to be the focus of this council in this town at some point. But. I, I would be very irritated if I was Habitat. And walked through this, the, the hoops that they did. Went, went to the extent of everything that they were required to, and then not get something out of it. So my, my feeling unfortunately is, in fairness. I'm gonna be voting for Habitat, but I would like to suggest something. Because I think that this program is still, uh, viable for us, I say. We give, we give the money to Habitat, because I, I believe they've earned it. Went through the steps that they were asked to, and then the rest of the money, we give it to Sparks. We don't do another open deal, you know, a year from now or eight months from now. But we give the rest of the money to them as a seed money to, to try and get this project off the ground and going. But if we're just gonna go on one or the other. Excuse me, I'm gonna vote for, for Habitat because it did. What was told to them, and I think we also have to, we have to look at, we have this, these commissions, these committees. And we have to somewhat look at, at the job that they're doing and go, well, you know. We're just gonna not pay any attention to you guys and we're gonna do our own thing, I don't think that's quite the right thing, I. Um, so that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Oh, I think it's just, it's just, okay, awesome. Okay, so anyone else have any final questions, or do we wanna just move into, I guess I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. Um, so my biggest concern of the scoring rubric, min- minimum threshold. Is, is around, um, number one, so the project is considered an eligible use or active activity under. Section three and benefits households earning less than eighty percent of the median family income. Um, and I just want clarification from James that, that if that was to not be met. If we have a legal concern with construction excise tax. If we were to disburse funds to Spark.
Um, well, my, I, a, a couple of points, um, one. You know, my, my office hasn't been asked to opine on the, whether the proposed program, you know, satisfies the. Requirements for the use of CET revenues, that's something we could look into at, at the direction of council, but. Um, uh, we haven't done that deep dive or been asked to do that deep dive. So, you know, um, Council President, you already know how I'm in, I'm, I'm kind of responding to a hypothetical, there's a, if it was. Determined that the use of the funds as proposed by Spark did not satisfy the. Requirements for the use of revenues, does that create some exposure for the city? Yes, it does. Um, but that's, that's an if, I don't, I can't say, you know, on the spot that it does or it doesn't.
Okay, and I guess I just am curious, because. As many people know, I've tried to get a housing project across the finish line for the last eight years in Newburgh, very similar type of concepts. And so I'm trying to keep a very open mind of not asking the questions that have been my pitfalls for the last eight years. But, and so I don't wanna take the sparkle out of your eye, but. My concern, one of the primary, is that. How are you going to incentivize people that are working families, really struggling, having high. Social determinants of health needs, including. Behavioral health needs, potentially substance use needs, and I'm saying this with all the love in my heart, because this, these are my people. How are you going to incentivize them to pay more than? What is realistically some, another apartment that they could get down the street, because twenty-two hundred dollars a month. That is, that's high for that type of living arrangement. I will speak for myself, even as a highly educated professional, it would be very difficult for me to buy into that. To be in a program for forty-eight months and invest. Time, which we're not clear, I think we said we're not clear of how much time, and I think that that's, you know, adjustable based on how the program evolves and all that. I wanna believe that those people are out there, I wanna believe that, you know. If I looked at the list and I see all of the people that are on the board, it would be inspiring and, you know, all of those things, but. What are you going to do to incentivize people that? Like cha- I mean, you're really talking about changing hearts and minds with a highly. Impacted group of individuals and families.
So I'd say it's challenging, I mean, that's the reality of it, so as part of our program. You have to be at eighty percent of, of less of AMI to apply for it, you have to do that. But the reality of what you're talking about at twenty-two hundred dollars, it's challenging out there. We actually picked that because we looked around at some of the newer apartments that were going in for a two-bedroom apartment. And we said, this is what people are paying that are working at Providence, working at George Fox, and working at the Allison. This is what they're paying, and so we tried to, um, structure it in such a way that people wouldn't have to be paying more than that. Can you get, um, cheaper places to rent? Absolutely, right? But we're trying to target the people that are working in the community that are already paying that today without having to pay too much of a premium to be inside the program.
You asked the question of what is the incentive, I think the incentive is what's on the backend of this. What's waiting for them, the opportunity that they will have funds set aside, which if they were just to go out and rent. There is no fun set aside after forty-eight months, and so I think that's really the incentive more than anything, I think that's what's gonna really motivate. For me, if it was me, I would look at that and go, hey, that's, that's free money. I mean, that's why I would look at it as an individual, I would say, yeah, let's do it, let's, 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 let's do this, and so that's. That's kinda where I see the incentive.
And I'm sorry, I should clarify. Of course there's incentive. Long-term.
Yeah.
But I think the reality is that the individuals that meet that criteria are going to be giving up paying for their kids soccer. Or going to, um, the beach once every few years as a family, like. Those are the trade-offs that I think you're gonna have to really be able to speak to as a program. Um, so another question I have though is, who on your board, um, has experience in? Social service world?
Todd does. Todd Hall does, uh, probably Alan Brown, but, uh. I would like to also talk about the requirements, I didn't think that there was any question here. We are gonna be solely providing this service to people who make less than eighty percent of the AMI. Now, the other part of that requirement is that it be for sixty years, well, I'm sorry. Habitat projects aren't necessarily going to be available at that income for sixty years. Because that house can be sold at some point by the people original.
I think they actually do have a requirement that it is permanent portable housing.
But this project is going to be for the next sixty years, because that's always going to be our, uh. Our requirement to get into it, uh, as long as this project will last, that, that will be the requirement.
Okay, now finance, so. One thing that makes me uncomfortable with this, but also what Peggy said is also how I feel, where I, you know. Many of us up here have applied for grants and it's so frustrating, cuz you can't demonstrate financial viability without a grant. So I totally understand that, but, um, it. Can you share how close you are to project completion? I mean, financially even, have you applied for grants or had commitment from donors that? Brings you to the finish line of what you anticipate of the seven million dollars, how close are you with that?
Let's say we're in the early stages of it, to be frank, Bill talked about one of the opportunities we're looking at, I think the city is another big one. We have a couple other ones, not to be, that we're, we're in talks with right now, that look promising, we've been asked to apply. Um, for another large grant too, so I'd say we're in the early stages, just to answer you straight, right? Um, we're applying for those, and some of those you need to get some money first, and then others join as well. And so we're looking for that first significant seed money with that, um, but there, there's other people that we're talking to that seem interested too.
Okay. Really amazing job, and I hope it didn't take the sparkle out of your eye, because we need people like all three of you in this community that are putting forward innovative ideas. And thinking about things slightly differently, and I really do wanna see this project happen, so.
So, um, one more thing I'd like to say, I was recently in Washington DC and I went to the Smithsonian Air and Space Museum. And I picked up a mug for this project, and it's an Apollo thirteen mug, and it says, failure is not an option. We are going to make this happen, whether the city of Newburgh gives us any money at, at all. Uh, we are going to get this project done, this is going to be something that I'm going to, well. We're, we are looking forward to a couple of years from now, sharing a cold drink. And celebrating the fact that we have done something really good for the city of Newburgh, and for a long time.
I agree. Thank you so much, okay, so now we will move into deliberation, um. And one, so I think there are three options, and if I'm missing an option, then tell me. Um, I don't know everything. Um, so the first would be to approve as recommended from the Affordable Housing Commission to move forward with. The approval of the Habitat for Humanity application, I think a second option, um. As long as we could, I think this has a caveat to it based on James's response to us, and I think that the second option is to approve Habitat. As recommended by the Housing, Affordable Housing Commission and give excess funds of CET to Spark. As you recommended to Counselor McBride, but I would want to put a caveat that Legal felt that. That was acceptable based on the application status. Um, and that we don't have an issue with a, an applicant being funded. Where another organization that would have had similar criteria met, didn't apply because they looked at the rubric and said, oh, we're not gonna meet that requirement. So I would want that signed off to feel comfortable personally, and third, um, would be to go to say pause. Now that we've heard Spark, we would like to, um, have a notice of funding. Round again, and we're not approving any applications at this time. I guess a fourth option would be to not approve Habitat and to move forward in its entirety with Spark. If Legal signed off on it, so I will pause, I think it's important that every counselor has the opportunity. Opportunity to weigh in on what they're, where they're leaning towards and get any questions answered by Legal specifically. Um, but I will start with Counselor Turkson.
Yeah, Mike, I really appreciated your thought, I agree, um. Habitat has really put forward a recommendation or a proposal that hits the previously published rubric, and I think I. It gives me pause to think about, um, tossing the rubric out completely. Particularly, there may be other organizations who might have similar ideas to Spark that, um. Would have wanted to apply had they known that this had been an opportunity, so, um. I'm, I'm hesitant to throw that out, I agree, this is an amazing project and it's really exciting to hear your mission and vision. I guess also wanting to support a new organization, I think I'm, I am leaning towards funding Habitat for Humanity, and then I would love to approach Spark's work with some curiosity. I guess I would be curious if we could put some sort of like timeline around, like utilization of funding, time to obtain additional capital. Um, so that there's some, some guidance there so that we can really realize and see outcome of their work. Versus just. Not that I doubt you all at all, but, um, versus just giving the money and then. Maybe it taking ten or fifteen years to get the funding, so.
Counselor Kilburg.
I'm, I'm going to, um, I would vote for. Giving all of the money to Spark and the. And I think a lot of Habitat, but when I learned that this money isn't really going to pay for. Um, the East Fifth House, but free up resources for developing the next eight homes. Well, it would be used, but it would free up other money, so, um, it's not as direct of a need to me. As what we see with Spark, I'd like to see them get up and running, and so I would, I would. Give them all the money if it was up to me.
Counselor McBride?
Well, I still feel the same as I spoke earlier. Um, I think Habitat, we should give the, what they're asking for, and then I do wanna give the rest of the funds to Sparks. Uh, and, and, uh. Move forward in that direction, I think if, if, um, James had any. Real serious concerns, he would have mentioned it, I mean, he said, well, there could be, there always can be. Somebody can always come with some type of a lawsuit that's ridiculous, and. But I, I think. I think, uh, we're in safe hands if we move forward, uh, and proceed in that direction.
Counselor Wheatley?
Yeah, to, to what you were speaking about, um. The Spark Group has their own set of lawyers, so I think for the city, we just have to make sure they meet the, the criteria. Which is that eighty percent, and then once we turn it over to them, their lawyer would make sure that they're actually. Um, vetting the right people, correct? Is that kinda what you're talking about?
I'm more concerned from the city's liability that there are other organizations or businesses that would have applied. If the minimum threshold wasn't there, because to be fair, they do not meet three of the five minimum thresholds. So, like, for example, let's say. Stoller Wines was like, we wanna bu- we wanna build workforce housing and all of our staff are eighty percent AMI. But we didn't want to do sixty, commit to sixty years, so we didn't apply. That opens us up for risk if Stoller were to say we're gonna sue the city, cuz we lost the opportunity to have a million dollars.
Well, I mean, Spark knew what the criteria was too, and they applied, so, I mean. Everybody has a chance to apply, whether, and we, we don't have to go with what the Affordable Housing Commission says. You know, it's, it's up to, we have the ultimate discretion here. This has been, there was a NOFA for a long time, so anybody could apply for it and just say, hey, I'm gonna try and see what happens. And that's what happened, so. I would like to give money to Spark. I think it's innovative. It would help many people. We've been trying to get something like this passed or thought of for the last two years since I've been on council and we haven't been able to, so. Yeah, it's a very exciting project and, you know, with potential twenty people. I also volunteer for Loving. They are amazing. I've done that for two years. I've, I'm a mentor. I know the classes they teach and the quality of their instructors. So I can speak very highly um, to their program. So yeah, as much as, and I, Habitat for sure, they're doing great things and they are giving homeownership. I mean, they're, they're not giving, they're not providing homeownership to quite this caliber, or not caliber, but um, amount. The amount of people, so, I mean, I would love to apply or um, approve money for the Spark project. I could say, you know, we give the money out when, where we disperse the money when your five oh one C three is in place. Okay, legally, we'd have to do that and then um, also when you guys have property selected. So if you, once you get your five oh one C three and you have your property selected, then I would say um. We could disperse the one million to you guys. That would, that would be what I have to say.
Okay, anyone else have anything that they wanna add?
Uh, thank, thank you. Counselor Yarnell Hallman, I, I think. There are few, there are a couple of different kind of concepts that are being discussed here with council and they're both, they're both good concepts. In terms of evaluating the risk or exposure for the city. One is with respect to like a solicitation or procurement. Seeking proposals for, for funding. So grants are not, grants are carved out or excluded from Oregon's public contracting code. So the city doesn't necessarily have a public contracting issue here, right? The city has a lot of flexibility as far as what process it wanted to use to make a determination on, to make a determination on. How it wanted to seek proposals or offers to, to allocate, uh, if you will, this, this funding. Um, council, obviously as a, has. Has the opportunity by receiving the recommendation from the commission to vote up or down on the, the, the commission's recommendation. Um, but it is just that, it's a recommendation, council can choose to not vote for it and, and do something else presumably. So there's, there's this um, kind of solicitation issue where there was an RFP. But as far as legal requirements, the city didn't legally have to issue an RFP in this instance to distribute these funds. So, there's that. There's also an issue about the kind of the, the, the use of revenue consideration and whether the use of revenue as proposed by any proposer. Is, is compliant with or satisfies not only the statutory requirements, but it's my office's recommendation that, that you align with the. Municipal code requirements, even though chapter three dot sixty is, has sunset. I think it's the strongest position. I appreciated uh, Counselor McBride's comments about. I can never guarantee that someone isn't going to sue the city, right? That could happen at any time. But my, my role is to try to keep the city in the most defensible position uh, possible, right? So um, the recommendation would be to comply not only with the state law requirements, but also the municipal code. Even though it sunset, it's still kind of governed that, um, that collection of those revenues, if you will. Um, that piece, I'm, I'm not opining on, you know, I, I appreciate the, the present, the presenters um, sharing. Um, the program and how it complies. My, my input there is that we haven't. Really dug into the details of the program and the analysis on what fits to, to issue an opinion as council for the city. On whether, on whether it fits. So I'm not saying it doesn't, um, I'm not refuting what, what was asserted here. Uh, I'm just saying that we haven't looked into it yet, but we certainly, uh, should council decide to allocate all of. Or, or any part of the funding to, to Spark. That's something that I would recommend that you ask my office to do.
So based on that, I, I agree with most of, like, almost everyone's comments. I think my preference would be to award the three, what, what was requested from Habitat for Humanity. And to give the remaining funds of, I think it's, is it seven hundred forty one thousand three hundred ninety four dollars? Something around there. Give the remaining funds to Spark and with a contingency that it passed muster of. CET, CET, whatever that, three twenty, whatever. But I would imagine that Spark would not decline seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, and I do think, I, I really do agree with Counselor McBride of. That Habitat for Humanity has jumped through the hoops and demonstrated commitment over. That nineteen ninety four, I think, is what was, was stated. Um, and so I would like to be able to honor that and if it's opening up access to an additional eight homes and then Spark opens in twenty additional homes. That's the best case scenario that we could ever ask for, so. Um, my hope would be that we can do both of those things tonight and to be frank, I think that. You, that Spark has a little bit of a runway to be able to open those twenty. Units, I would guess, not gonna happen this year or next year. Yeah, so um, I would like to see that house completed and then usage of funds to be able to open up for an additional. Eight homes. So, that would be my recommendation, but I will now. Ask if someone has a motion they would like to put on the floor.
So, James, if, if I make a, a motion and it's not specifically to this resolution. Is that, that'll, that's okay, we don't have to, we can make something different, right?
Yeah, yes, Counselor McBride, that's, that's correct.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion that we uh, go ahead and grant the three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. To Habitat for Humanity and the rest of the funds of seven hundred and, whatever, Katie, help. There were just the remainder, right? Thanks, Will. The remainder would go to Sparks.
Do you have a contingency that it passed?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I would, I would like to make sure that it passes legal uh, um, clarification there. From James, so.
I'm gonna second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Would part of that motion include the five oh one C three in place and the property in place?
No, because I would say that we hang on to the, the money and, until, yeah. But I'm not specifically saying that, I guess, in the motion.
Just a point of clarification, so that would be. With the nonprofit status in place and having James's office check for legal sufficiency. And those are the two criteria to this new motion, is that correct?
I agree, yes.
And we're saying we, and the motion does not include securing of property to disperse funds, is that correct? Okay, so it does not include that. Only nonprofit status and legal muster. Okay. All right, I will, I don't think we have to do a roll call vote. I think that, but there's only five of us. Should I do a roll call? Let's do a. All right, let's do a roll call vote. Can I get a roll call, Rachel?
Sure. Counselor McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Wheatley.
Yes.
Counselor Yarnell Hallman.
Yes.
Counselor Kilburg?
No.
Mayor Rosacker has abstained. Counselor Turkerson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes. I think this is a successful night. So, thank you both for being here and um, good job. Thank you so much. All right. Let's do a small recess to shake hands and give hugs. We're gonna close this out really, really fast, so if, and if everyone can take a seat, we're gonna get this, get this party ended. Okay, so now up is supplemental, uh, item nine two, supplemental budget number three. We have a presentation, I'm guessing, from the fabulous Director Strode.
Be the last one you get to hear from me for a while. Can you put my presentation up? Well, I just meant on the budget, so you'll just have to savor it. Yes, that's different than the budget, though. Whole different project. Okay. So this is our third and last supplemental budget of this fiscal year. And we had total adjustments for three hundred and forty five thousand, three hundred and sixty four dollars. And for the general fund, we had resources that increased of a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and thirteen dollars. So this was part of that closeout of the Economic Development Fund that we're working on. So, part of that was moving the economic development portion, which was the business licenses to the general fund. So, back in twenty twenty one, we used to have an economic health manager. And part of those funds for the business licenses were used to help fund that position as well as money from the general fund. So, since we haven't had that position in the last four years, we've had business license fees that have just accumulated and sat there. So that's um, total at a hundred and seventy thousand. So we're moving those funds over to the general fund where the planning staff lives. Who picked up that economic development work when we lost that position. And then for Fund Thirty One, the Administrative Services Fund, we had resources that increased of a hundred and fifty two thousand. This was our final um, insurance reimbursement check we received related to the City Hall flood event. Um, we had a small increase to the city attorney appropriation for thirty thousand. This was um, for additional hours for our part-time city prosecutor. So she is truly a part-time employee. She doesn't have set hours that she works. And so we've seen an uptick of criminal citations this year, which means more prosecution hours that she works. So that's why you'll see a little bit of an increase there. Uh, finance increased by about seventy five thousand. Part of this was because we've had a long-term temp. In our department for an employee that's been out on FMLA. And then we've also had um, some additional bank fees for utility billing, which if you're interested in some statistics. Um, last month, we had. Um, eight thousand one hundred and seventy three customers who paid their bill. And of that, seven thousand and three of them paid electronically, which was eighty six percent. So that's what's really accumulating a large portion of our fees that we're looking at. So we're hoping to try and do a, a little bit of a look at to see if we can get some better bank fees offered to us. We're already at a pretty low rate actually for the per transaction that we're accumulating. But we're still hoping to see if we can negotiate a little bit lower to save some money, because it does add up quickly. Yes.
So, by people paying electronically, we get charged?
Yes. Yeah, credit card fee.
Oh, doing credit card instead of just having it withdrawn out of, like a, uh, withdrawn out of a checking account.
So even if you do an automatic payment from your checking account, we do still pay a small fee for that, but it's not as much as a credit card processing fee. So, the only time we really don't pay any fees are if somebody comes in and pays a check or mails a check in, or they pay cash. Everything else is some sort of a fee that you pay for an electronic process.
I'm sorry, but my wife is part of that problem, you know, she pays with.
Eighty six percent of the city pays electronically. It's just the cost of doing business. People like being able to call in and pay. They like being able to have it automatically come out or pay online. So it's just a matter of managing the fees and getting the best deal we can get on that. And then for the Public Works Appropriation, um, this one actually was to. So part of it was related to the City Hall flood event, which was the hundred and fifty two thousand that we got that was reimbursed for us. And then the other hundred and seventy five thousand was related to um, some purchases we made for facilities that came out of our contingency funds. Um, those purchases were the PSB HVAC units seven and eight that were replaced. As well as the PSV gate replacement. Yes. For the wastewater fund, uh, the public works expenditure increased by four hundred and fifty one thousand. This was also due to planned capital outlay purchases that we took from our assigned contingency funds for those. And those purchases, which you're gonna hear me repeat because they were all coming out of um, several funds, so. The skid steer grader and power rake attachment, this came from both the water and wastewater fund. There was a John Deere tractor, which also came from water and wastewater. The Vector truck, which we've been waiting for forever, which just arrived, um, that came from wastewater, water and stormwater. And then the continuous chain truck, which was also wastewater, water and stormwater. So when you hear me say those again, it's not different ones, it's all the same purchase, but it's just split between these funds. So same thing here for water. It increased two hundred and sixty two thousand due to these planned capital outlay vehicle purchases. Which those again are the John Deere tractor, the Freightliner hook truck, part of that Vector truck and part of that continuous chain truck. And then we also had an increase for transfers out by five hundred and fifty thousand. This was largely due to the water SDC revenue that did not come in as we anticipated. Which a lot of that has to do with our new SDC model. We're just aren't generating quite as much revenue. Um, with the SDCs for water in particular, and a lot of that had to do with the units that were built. I learned from our engineering staff, um, when they, the units that got built this year had multiple wastewater. But then only one water unit that got put in for those multiple wastewater. So, um, that was kind of why we didn't see as much on the water SDC. So we're, we're needing to um, increase our transfers to pay for the debt service that the wa- water SDC fund covers. Yes, but luckily that debt is almost paid off. I think it's paid off next year, so this will be a short-term problem. Um, the nine one one fund, we're increasing our communications appropriations by forty thousand. Um, part of this was when we did our forecasting for the next four years. We kind of learned what ending fund balance we need to sustain over the next four years. Which is a reasonable one, so we're getting our um, fund balances back to those amounts. And using up a little bit more with more expensive staff to balance that out. And then for Fund Fourteen, this is what we talked about with the general fund. So those special payments are gonna decrease by a hundred and seventy thousand. These were related to the economic development portion from the business licenses that are gonna be moving to the general fund. And that's the transfer portion that we're gonna be moving to the general fund. Uh, the public safety fee, this is very similar to the nine one one. So when we did our forecasting, we learned approximately what the fund balances need to be. So we shifted some staffing around so that we're still utilizing for police the full three FTE officers. And for the communications, we're using up a little bit more of the fund balance this year because we plan on drawing down all of their fund balance. Because we're anticipating that um, communication officer fee to go away in FY twenty six, twenty seven. Yes, pending debt reduction. And for stormwater, there was an increase of a three hundred and one thousand. Again, this was related to planned capital outlay vehicle purchases. Um, those purchases were the Vector truck, that continuous chain truck and a leaf vac. And then the last fund on here is the governmental capital projects fund. Um, this one has just had a fund balance sitting for the last several years. And we're finally have made the last payment related to the communication tower debt. So now we are able to take the last of the fund balance in there and apply that to our communication tower debt. And close out this fund. So all of these maneuvers are that. We had a small amount of retainage that we realized was. We had a small amount of retainage that we realized was incorrect because we talked to the vendor and we don't owe that. So we were able to remove that retainage on there and recognize that revenue and basically put all of that towards a transfer out to the general fund, which is where the debt service pays for that. And that's it? Any questions on that? And also, I just realized this was a public hearing and we didn't start this the right way. Yep, sorry.
Should I call it order? Calling this order. Any declaration of conflict of interest or abstentions? Staff report, thank you. Public testimony. Was there any public testimony? Oh, no public testimony. Recommendations from staff?
To adopt Resolution twenty twenty five dash three nine seven five.
Awesome. Any council deliberation or questions? Can I get a motion?
I move we adopt a resolution twenty twenty five dash three nine seven five for Katie's recommendation.
Second. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, opposed, same sign? All right, most most in motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine dot three, which is rate review appointments. Can I get a motion unless anyone has anything they would like to discuss about the recommended appointments?
Do you want to?
Oh, sorry. I always want to listen to you. Yes, we would love to have a recommendation from our city recorder.
It's getting late. So Rach Thomas, your city recorder. Obviously, there are several openings and we are recruiting for a mass quantity of openings right now. So please encourage people to apply for boards committees and commissions. But for a rate review commission, we've had a couple applicants who currently serve on other commissions too, and you can serve on more than one. And they have applied to the rate review commission, which is down quite a few members right now. And the mayor has selected Roger Coleman and Raquel Peregrino de Prito for terms ending in twenty twenty seven, should it be ratified by this council.
Awesome. Counselor McBride.
I move that we go ahead and accept these two. Names as presented.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signaled by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for all of your hard work with all of the recruitments, Rachel. It's a lot. Okay, and now we have media recognition review for Newsberg. Do we have any presentation from staff on this? Will Worthy?
It would clearly be, given that we've developed a criteria system and a scoring system, it would be most peculiar to not recognize a news outlet which has a regular production schedule, press badge, journalism, credentials and all of the above. And now that we have this scoring pattern, we know how to do it. I would recommend, staff recommends that Newsberg be recognized, just like another media outlet was recognized fairly recently.
Great, thank you, Will. Is there any deliberation, comments, questions from council? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that council approve Brandon with Newsberg for media recognition.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor McBride. All those in favor signaled by saying aye, aye? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, well. Anyone else have anything that they would like to bring up tonight? Thank you so much for being here. And the meeting is concluded at nine twenty seven PM.